Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the well-attended, in fact, perhaps the best-attended Select Board meeting I've ever been at in three years. Today is Monday, March 18th, only a couple more days till spring, although in New England, that's more like winter, but that's okay. Today, we will be going over several things, starting with announcements after we review this agenda, public comment period, the Town Manager Report, where we consider ratifying the Town Manager's appointment of Leah Pierce as a Communications Officer for the Town of Groton, consider ratifying the Town Manager's appointment of Edward Wenzel as a per diem van driver for the Council on Aging, consider adding a warrant article to the 2019 Springtown Meeting to provide additional funding for maintenance and operation of the Prescott School, approve requests from KP Law to represent various towns on police mutual aid agreements. We'll have an FYI 2020 budget discussion. At 7:15, in joint session with the Finance Committee, we'll do a public hearing to review the various warrant articles on the 2019 Springtown Meeting warrant. We have two published items under other business, discuss potential for one-year override ballot question, and update on the reusable bags initiative. I have another item we'll be adding into that. We have our ongoing issues review, followed by liaison reports if there's any, followed by our approval, potential approval of the regularly scheduled meeting minutes for March 11th, 2019, and subsequently, we will adjourn this regular session and enter into executive session for purposes of conducting strategy session and preparations for negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically the Town Manager's contract, and then we will not return to open session. All right, under announcements, I'm actually going to start because I'm very excited. I have my "Celebrate the Center Council on Aging" ticket for Saturday from 6:00 PM at Groton Inn. You two can have one of these, or two, or three, you just have to.
You can have them tonight?
You can have them tonight?
I have some too.
There we go. So, please, this is a great thing to see what's happening in that amazing new building that's coming up, coming up age, if you will.
Yeah, we've got a lot of things going on that night, a lot of information coming out, and very, very proud.
Excellent.
And hors d'oeuvres in champagne.
And hors d'oeuvres in champagne. The information hors d'oeuvres in champagne. You choose which ones are your favorite. All right, any other announcements? Becky, yes?
Yes, I also have some announcements about organizations in town, several, as a matter of fact. One is that many of you may have seen, but in case you didn't, it's a big success for the National River Watershed Association, and for all of us, that the legislation creating, designating the National River as a wild and scenic river was passed and signed in Washington, DC. And so that's a credit to years of work by lots and lots of people spearheaded by the Watershed Association. And just, I want to remind everyone to think about 50 years ago, that the idea that that could happen would have been, you would have been laughed out of the room, and if you don't know what I'm talking about, go to the Watershed Association's webpage, and you will see the huge change in the National River over those years. Also, the Groton History Center had a very successful and well-attended fundraiser Saturday night that I attended. I just wanted to say it was really well-done and well-supported, another organization doing a lot for our town. And as we are sitting here, I believe some of you may have come by, the Interfaith Council organized a candlelight vigil down by the Town Common this evening to stand silently in support of peace, love, and understanding for all the people on our planet. And one last thing, tomorrow night, one of my favorite events in Groton, the Taste of Nishoba. It's a really good deal, you get lots and lots of really, really good food, the money goes to support the, help me out here, Chamber of Commerce, and you can buy tickets at the door, it's held at the athletic facility in the back of Lawrence Academy.
I have an announcement.
You want to follow that? Sure.
Sure. As you know, we've been working, our IT department has been working very diligently on our new website, we presented it to the board, and then Mike sent it out to some residents in town who offered feedback, and he's made a lot of changes based on board feedback and citizen feedback, and we're going to try to launch, not going to try, we are going to launch the new website on April 10th, which is a Wednesday. So we'll put out a little press release beforehand on how to get on it and what to do, but we're very, very excited for our new website, so we'll be releasing that on April 10th. In addition, on the Town Manager's Report tonight, I'm going to take items four and six, which is additional warrant article for Prescott and the budget discussion under the public hearing for the warrant because they're an article specific to those two events. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Cover those on the 7:15 agenda item, so noted. Any other announcements from anybody? Yeah, let's go, can we pass back the microphone? So since we have a lot of people, and many of you may or may not have been here before, and if you've been here before, you need a reminder, we need the microphones, not for the people in this room, for some of the people that are watching from home can hear what people are saying, otherwise it doesn't come through over the TVs and on the tape. So please use the microphone, and it should have a blue light on it to indicate it's on.
It's on.
Yeah, you won't hear it in here, you'll just, they'll hear it in home.
Okay, all right. This is for anybody that's interested, I stopped by and talked to the gentleman at Tarbell School who's redoing the school there, and he did agree to have a open house when he's done, so there's a lot of history in that school, a lot of people here have gone to that school, so more information to come.
Do you have an ETA on when?
No.
Okay. Marlena?
I have an update, I don't know if you want it under budget discussions, liaisons, or public comment.
You already got the mic.
Last week, we had met as a board, we did approve our budget, it is the same number that Mark currently has. Basically, there was also a second vote, that second vote basically requested the superintendent to continue to review current revenues, to continue to review expenses as things start to become more definitive for us, because it is still a little bit earlier for state funding and non-contractual expenses. We have a bus transportation contract still out to figure out for either a five-year or one-year, amongst other things, enrollment is still being determined in regards to new enrollment and people moving in and out. So, any, we've requested her to continue her work up until Town Meeting, in which the school committee will meet again both March 27th and April 10th. If there are anything that happens to fall in the favor of the school district, then the consideration was to decrease the budget further. We can't increase the budget, obviously, we set on a set mark at this point, but any other savings will decrease it further, if possible, and after, beyond Town Meeting, if the state funding happens to change, you know, with any luck it will, and we do see some benefits after Town Meeting, you would then see, obviously, that end up flowing through free cash, which we are utilizing in our budget, about $400,000 of it at this point.
Marlena, can I take this opportunity? The board had previously voted to support the redistribution methods they are trying to push through in the State House regarding funding, have you heard any updates on that?
I believe there's actually going to be a meeting, actually, at the State House next week, they have requested all formal documents from our meetings. I did speak with a number of different other school committees across the United, across the state, a number of them have already done the same as we are. They believe that because Boston is behind it, supporting, they think that it could be favorable to actually pass, which would be fantastic, because they say, once Boston's behind it, everyone gets behind it. They also said that there doesn't seem to be, Senator Kennedy said at our meeting, that there didn't seem to be as much enthusiasm from the House. So we do have House Representatives now invited to our school committee, March 27th, anyone who would like to come, help shake them down, you're more than welcome to attend. She'll be there to answer some questions.
Great.
And so, to be clear, how this challenge affects our district and our towns.
All right, thanks, Marlena, appreciate that. All right, anybody else under public comment or announcements? All right, seeing none, we'll move forward. Mark?
Mr. Chairman, Leah Pierce, who is here, I'd ask her to come up with the chief to sit up here. Leah has been a full-time communications officer since July 2013, she has served with the Gardner and Millbury Police Departments, she comes to Groton with experience in certification in emergency medical dispatch, NextGen 911, fire dispatch, and the Association of Public Safety Communications. She's passed the required employee physical and extensive background investigation, and she's going to bring a wealth of knowledge and experience to the Groton Police Department, and Chief Luth had highly recommended her for appointment to me as a communications officer for Groton. As you know, we have two vacancies, Leah is the first one I'm bringing you tonight, pending a background investigation, I'll have another appointment for you next week, but we're very excited to bring Leah on board, she's going to be able to hit the ground running and do a great job for us. So I've made that appointment, and I would ask the board to consider ratifying that appointment this evening.
All right, anything from the board? Chief, Leah, would you like to speak? You don't have to, just give me the opportunity.
Just like to say during the interview process, she came out far above everyone else, and when the background investigators went to her current place of employment, they couldn't have given a better recommendation, and they're quite disappointed that they're losing her.
Mr. Chair, I move that we ratify the Town Manager's appointment of Leah Pierce as a Communications Officer for the Town of Groton effective?
Immediately.
Immediately.
You're going to work tonight? 11 o'clock shift, yes. It moved and seconded, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
I heard that unanimous.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Welcome and congratulations.
Welcome, board, thanks for taking your time.
Welcome.
Congratulations, welcome.
Mr. Chairman, the Council on Aging Director has requested that I appoint Edward Wenzel as a per diem van driver for the council, I've made that appointment, I asked the board to ratify that appointment this evening.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I also heard that unanimous, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I want to jump down to item number five in the packet, I had brought a request to the board from KP Law for determination from the board on their representation of Pepperell and reviewing a detailed mutual aid agreement, because they need that, the board needs to vote, that it will not affect their exercise of independent professional judgment, since they also represent the Town of Groton as Labor Council. You asked for a little bit more detail on it, you can see, I gave the board, I think I sent this out last week from Chief Scott from Pepperell, explaining what he's attempting to do by this, and basically, what's going to have to happen is KP Law has to review it, and it has to come to this board before it gets adopted, so once you see the final draft, you're able to do it, but it's basically trying to get the details billing amongst the communities the same, which we may or may not have a problem with, but I have no problem with Town Council at least looking at it and bringing a final draft to the board. So I'd ask the board to vote that rule tonight, to allow Town Council to review that draft.
Becky?
I just, I wondered, does this sound like this will have the potential to run afoul of contracts?
That's why we would have to review it, Becky, that's a great point, Patricia and I talked about it this morning, I'd have to see the final draft of it, just to make sure it doesn't have any impact, and if it does, you know, we'll work with Chief Luth and the unions to make sure that it doesn't negatively impact anything, and if it does, we probably won't recommend signing it to the board.
So all we're authorizing is that it's okay for KP Law to try to draft something that we could agree with?
To review it, correct.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Has there been any consideration for an independent council other than KMP to review this?
Well, KP is the council for Pepperell, and they're the ones that are, they've asked Town Council, their Town Council to review it, and ordinarily, that wouldn't be a big deal for their Town Council to review, but since they're also councils for other communities, that's why they need the review. Once we get it, we'll probably have our attorney look at it as well, our Town Council will look at it as well, for our review, before this board takes it up.
I would be fine with it, provided that our Town Council reviews it, so any motion that would be made, I would like it added in, and if need be, I would be willing to offer that motion.
Once we get the final, once we get the final agreement, yes, I agree with you, Josh.
So I will offer a motion that this board approve a request from KP Law to represent various towns on police mutual aid agreements, and subject to positive review by KP, ask that our Town Council review said mutual aid agreement prior to this board approving.
Well, I'm not sure that has to be in the motion, I think it's two separate things we're talking about.
I don't believe it is.
There's a motion on the table, there's a second for discussion, thank you, Becky.
Well, I mean, I think that what's being asked is that we, we say that we don't see a conflict of interest for KP to do this, it's a secondary step that we would review whatever comes before us, and I certainly agree that we should ask our other attorney to review what comes before us.
If you feel that you can reword my motion, I will withdraw my motion in favor of yours.
Well, I would, my motion would just say that we authorize, we agree that KP Law can do this, that there's no conflict for us.
The chair will allow a second motion after the vote to coincide with your wishes.
No, with Truitt, for the time being.
So you want me to state that as a motion?
Please.
I move that we...
Grant the waiver. I probably have to say, grant the waiver to KP.
Grant the waiver for KP Law to work with several towns on this issue.
Has it been moved?
Second.
And seconded. Any other discussion on the new motion on the table? Anything from the public? We have a hand raised, please.
Reston 01472, the ugly sister town. There's a problem on Pepperell Road that's never been fixed, and it gets worse and worse. It's the flooding between pole 35 and 36, near 235 Pepperell Road. It's the new house that was supposed to have been taken care of long ago, and when I came home, the flooding was unbelievable, and it was icing, and I'm going to tell you, if I get rear-ended because I've locked them up, you all are going to have a little squawk from me for not repairing this. And the second thing is, you're not charging enough rent at the Prescott School, even though you wanted to move it on. I told you all, terrible bills.
Do you have any comments specifically to this item? Because we can come back to those items under the other agenda.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it up.
All right. Well, we'll call on you again when we're on the Prescott School matter. Anything further from the public on this item? Yes?
I would just like to...
Michelle, I'm sorry, we do need you to grab a microphone for the people at home.
Does this have to do with the motion before the board right now, on the waiver?
No.
I was just going to tell Mr. Reston, Stormwater Committee will deal with this issue at its next meeting for the flooding on Pepperell Road.
No.
Okay.
I want you guys to take this vote.
All right. Can I, can I ask that we constrain comments to the matters that are under discussion, please? I'm going to give you a little leeway, but we've got a lot of people here, and if I ran a lot of leeway, we're going to never end this meeting. Board members, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposition?
I haven't taken a position.
Any abstentions?
Nay.
So we have four to one. Let it be known that Mr. Deegan has asked that this board allow, encourage a review of any potential policy by our own Town Council.
I will do that before I move it to the board.
And I concur with Mr. Deegan's assessment.
Mr. Chairman, the Select Board has scheduled a joint public hearing with the Finance Committee for Monday, March 18, 2019, at 7:15 PM, Groton Town Hall, 173 Main Street, Select Board's meeting room, second floor, Groton, Mass. The purpose of the meeting will be to discuss the articles contained in the April 29, 2019 Springtown Meeting warrant, all interested parties are encouraged to attend. I'd ask the Finance Committee to come to order, and I'd ask the Selectmen to open the public hearing.
I move that we open the public hearing.
Second.
Been moved and double-seconded. Board, all those in favor?
Aye.
We're now having an open public hearing?
And I will call the Finance Committee to order.
And the Finance Committee's been called to order. Do you need a microphone for the Finance Committee?
We'll grab it if we need it.
All right, thanks. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, as we ordinarily do, I walk us through each article, and if there's somebody here specifically to discuss that article, we bring it up, and they, they're able to attend. I'm going to ask the board, there's one group that's, a lot of people are here tonight for the one particular issue, and that's Article 26, which is a citizens petition article for Olivia Way. We have some town committees here, as well as the residents from Olivia Way, to address that, they prepared a PowerPoint presentation with the board and Finance Committee's indulgence, I would ask us to take that article up first, if that's okay?
Finance Committee? All right, yes, please.
I'd ask the proponent from Olivia Way to come up, and I'll get your PowerPoint presentation up on the screen. For the board's information, it's Article number 26, it's asking, it's asking for the use of conservation land for drainage, which causes a whole Article 97 issue, but I thought before we get into the Article 97, we'd allow the residents to present their PowerPoint presentation first, and I have it up on the screen, if you tell me to move it on, I will move it on.
Wait, we have a question from Allison.
Mark, can you just clarify for us or remind us, are we, we're not taking positions tonight, correct? We're just kind of gathering information?
Yeah, today you're gathering information, and next week I'll have time for you to take positions.
Okay, so we're not taking any action on this in any way?
Nope, it's for the public to understand what the article is.
Correct. Today, usually, the only action we might take is if we decide we want to remove an item, if that's possible, we generally do not take positions on articles during this meeting.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, welcome, thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Board of Selectmen, I'm, my name is Channing Lambert, I'm a resident of Olivia Way.
And I'm Scott Hepburn, I live at 14 Olivia Way.
So we're here before you are, obviously, for our citizens petition for this article to go on the Town Meeting. We are looking for a drainage easement to be on, what is it, map 228 parcel 59, this will alleviate the flooding that has been going on on Olivia Way and Red Pepper Lane. If you go ahead and move to the next slide, the flooding had started in the beginning of November, and has continued in those months thereafter, all the way until this current month, we had flooding this, just this past weekend. As you can see here, this is the bottom of Olivia Way, as it reaches towards that conservation land. At this point in time, you can see the flooding has reached about a foot, and if we move on to the next slide, I believe this is a video.
This is actually a video, if we'd like to play it, you can actually kind of see the depth.
I don't think we can play the video, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, that's fine, we can, you guys can watch it on your own if you'd like, but essentially, it's a video that shows the depth of the flood, and that took, basically takes up almost 50% of the cul-de-sac, that the residents would have to park their cars at the other end, as they could not go through the flood to get to their houses.
This next slide shows two pictures, again, on probably the worst instance of flooding that we had, it was about two feet deep in the worst places, residents could not reach their homes, they had to park further on the street. During also these cold months, it would freeze, and so, vehicles would have to drive over this ice or break through the ice in order to get to their homes. We'll move on to the next slide.
Could, can I ask a question on that? Go back, can you go back one?
Hold on, you know something? Yes, I can.
So, is the black pavement there that we're seeing, is that the road and the flooded place is the cul-de-sac?
That is the driveways.
That's someone's driveway?
Yeah.
So, so where does the road come in?
Which picture would you like to look at first?
In this first picture here, this would be the road that traverses around essentially the way you see, this would be the road.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
If you go ahead and move on to the next slide. So during this flooding, we had flooding in some of our homes, on different occasions, the flooding would reach about 10 inches deep inside our homes, and the flooding was not also just inside our homes, but also on the properties of the homes as well. If you could move to the next couple of slides, go ahead, move to the next one. The flooding would be also around the foundations, and also in the backyards, as you can see that, that's somebody's entire backyard, that middle picture, that then just froze over after it flooded, and in the last picture on the right.
Oh, sorry, I went ahead, I apologize.
You're fine. That is where a majority of the water is ending up as a result, and that is also starting to encroach on some of the properties as well, and that is ultimately the water that needs to be moved. If you look at here, these are some of the things that we believe that drainage easement would help with, there's continuous flooding that has been happening on Red Pepper Lane, which leads to Olivia Way, and also on Olivia Way, we believe it would eliminate that, it would also allow for access to the street in general, not only for the residents, but any emergency vehicles, school buses, commercial services. There is continuous pumping currently being paid for by some of the residents in order to keep the street clear when it floods, and also to help keep those basements from flooding. There is standing water in those backyards that have been having the risk, and this would also help with the safety risks that happen to do with the flooding. There has been a lot of erosion damage due to this flooding, and we would hope that with this easement and the plan that is being presented, that it would allow all this excess water to be handled in a safe manner, in an environmentally friendly manner.
So my understanding is that there are plans before the Stormwater Committee right now for approval?
Yes.
And then once those are approved, if Town Meeting grants this, all the costs associated with the improvements would be borne by the developer of the cul-de-sac, it's not going to be, there's no town expense relative to this particular issue?
From my understanding, yes.
Okay. So that's, that's the first thing the board needs to know. Second, because they're looking together on conservation land, in order to grant an easement, you have to perform what they call an Article 97 request, which requires a two-thirds of approval by both houses of the legislature, and I know Nick is here somewhere, one of the things that we're working on right now, in order to grant this easement, there has to be a like piece of property put into a conservation restriction in order for it to be approved. So you have to have an equal, it's an equal amount of land, correct?
Equal greater.
Equal and greater amount of land, and I know the Conservation Commission is working on what that would be, so we're still in the preliminary stages, but that will be part of this presentation. The way the article is drafted, and because it's a citizens petition, we can't change it, there will probably be a motion to amend that article to allow for the transfer of land at Town Meeting, and I know once Nick has more information, we'll bring that back to the board, to the Finance Committee and everybody, so that he'll understand, but just so you know, it is, it's a very involved and complicated process to get this done.
I have a comment on that, if I could. There's two exceptions to the Article 97, one would be deemed by the state, a person in charge of that article, as an extenuating circus, an emergency, the other one would be, if I remember, Nick, was there another one?
Yeah, can you grab a mic?
Yeah, so you're referring to the two scenarios that I described in the Stormwater meeting, maybe about a week or so ago. Fortunately, since that time, that document that I had referenced was a, was a state bill that never got passed. So the current no, no net loss policy is that 1998 policy, which has a lot less details on it. So in this case, and I spoke with a representative from the Office of the Secretary of Environmental Affairs, who confirmed that we do need to have a replacement land for this.
Thanks, Nick. Mr. Deegan here, Josh.
Certainly, the photographs demonstrate the issues that the neighborhood's dealing with, and it's quite a hardship, and we need to work with you to help to rectify that, but I do have a series of questions, and I'm, these aren't necessarily for you, but these are for town employees, and I'd like to know a few of these answers. So who was the consulting engineer for the Town of Groton at the time that this subdivision was approved, and was the drainage system that failed approved by them?
Will you speak, please take your microphone?
It was, and still is, niche engineering. This subdivision goes back to 2002, and then was modified in 2007, because part, most of the subdivisions in the Town of Pepperell, and there was litigation with the Town of Pepperell, so it's an old, an old plant that was never developed until it was sold by John Lorden to Peter Krakonis in 2014, and the flooding problems came to light last fall in November of 2018, as described by the residents.
So, Michelle, you understand I was on the board at the time that this was approved?
I do.
And I recall it well, and it's a very flat piece of property near...
It's an old gravel pit.
Yeah, no, I recall that. But what liability... Yeah, no, I recall that. But what liability, if any, does our consulting engineer have relative to this situation?
I don't think I could, I could answer that. I mean, they went through the normal reuse and construction inspections. The, when the subdivision was designed, the deep hole tests that were performed and witnessed by the Pepperell Town Engineer as well as by Nishova Associated Boards of Health showed groundwater 12 feet deep. And what we're dealing with now is a huge infusion of groundwater. There are several subsurface storm tech infiltrator systems and they seem to be without any overflow provision. And that seems to be exacerbating the problem.
So before you go down the path of dealing with the state legislature to deal with the conservation issues involved with draining onto conservation land, has the developer tried to solve the situation?
We've met with the developers seven or eight times since November and there was, one, there are 10 homes on four acres. These are single-family condos. So the amount of land area to work with that is in the, in the condo development is very limited. And the temporary measure was to discharge the water onto conservation property with the permission of the Conservation Commission. And through the series of meetings that we've had with the developer, with his engineer and with Niche Engineering, this seems to be the, the best remedy. And I would like to, I mean, as the pictures demonstrate, stress that this, this is a real emergency situation. This is an untenable living condition for people who are residents of Olivia Way. And the Planning Board, the Conservation Commission and the Earth Removable Stormwater Committee have been working together, trying to do whatever we can do within our jurisdictional limits to bring a solution forward to this problem.
And the final question I would have is, the town still holding any type of bond on the subdivision?
I will pass the mic to Takashi.
Thank you, Michelle. Josh, yes, so the Planning Board holds a bond on the subdivision. It covers Red Pepper Lane, which is intended to become a town way, public way at some point, and as well as the infrastructure related to the overall subdivision.
What is the amount of the bond being held by the town?
It's just shy of $210,000. It's 209 and something.
Is there anything in process to seize the bond?
Uh, so no, the bond is in place if, and the planning board can call it if needed. The bond is still in effect. We had communications with, it's a tri-party agreement. So the money is held by Washington Savings Bank in, I want to say Lowell or Lawrence, one of those L cities in that part of the state. And so the planning board has not made any decisions on calling or altering that.
No, in so much as you have homeowners that are paying taxes to the Town of Groton and they have hardships currently upon them due to the flooding and inaccessibility to their properties in an easy way. Is the planning board taking into consideration seizing the bond in order to pump this in an immediate way, through a temporary measure in order to pump it onto conservation land?
The planning board has not.
Why?
I can only speak to what they've done. I can't speak to their motivations. It has not been, that has not been a part of the discussion.
I think it should become part immediately.
I can take that under advisement.
Thank you. I'm set for now.
Yes, Allison.
So I'm just wondering, do, do we have confirmation somehow from an as-built or something that, that the project was constructed to the plans? So that we know it's a planned issue as opposed to a, we do, okay.
That was my first question to Michelle.
As usual, Mark, I'm just a couple steps behind.
Andy, brother, Allison?
No.
Becky, and then John.
I've, I guess, two questions. So what's the expectation, even assuming that we vote this at town meeting? How long is it going to take if it has to go to the legislature?
Whatever, it has to be docketed, the legislature has to take it up, they have to vote on it, they have to hold hearings on it. So this isn't gonna happen overnight. It could take several months.
Hopefully faster than the charter.
Yeah, so is there perhaps a temporary, something that could happen, maybe what Josh just suggested? In the interim?
Temporary relief.
The pumping that's going on now seems to have abated the situation somewhat. The long-term remedy was scheduled to be implemented this spring and summer before we ran into the Article 97 issue for the work on the conservation property. And we have reached out to Representative Sheila Harrington, who does not live far away from this property, and to State Senator Edward Kennedy to ask for their assistance. Should town meeting vote to approve this article, we would like them to do whatever is possible to fast-track this so that the, the work can be done this summer when the water table is low and so the residents do not have to endure a winter like they did this year.
And then I had another question.
Yeah, Becky, continue.
So if we have to acquire, put another parcel of land into conservation, is, are we anticipating that the developer would pay for that?
Correct, absolutely.
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 Is he, he or she?
They are working with him as we speak.
Agree to all of this?
Have they, has he agreed or is still negotiating?
Agreed is maybe a little too forward of a word, but I don't think there's much of a negotiation with this. The state seems to be pretty black and white on the need for replacement land. So if there's gonna be a solution that utilizes conservation land, this is just a requirement. It's just that simple.
We really have no choice.
Right, we, I understand that part. Thank you.
John Geiger, you had a question.
Yeah, I have a couple of things. One of them was partly cleared up for me, and that is that the Reading Meadow Estates Trust would be the party that's actually looking for the waiver. So that they can do their work and design something that feeds into, so that's really, it's not the homeowners association. It's the builders trust that he set up. And it looked to me like, from the drawing that was sent to me, and I expanded it as well as I could on a computer screen, it looked to me like there is a wastewater collection point in the middle of the center of the cul-de-sac. Is that correct?
Yes.
That is one of the stormwater, storm tech underground drainage structures. There are three of them on Olivia Way. One in the center and one behind number 10 and 13 and 14. And those are where the stormwater is discharged to under the present design.
Okay, so it's a stormwater.
It is a stormwater system, right.
I'm still concerned about where is household wastewater going, where's the leaching field, is all that working?
They're connected to Pepperell Water and Sewer. There's an intermunicipal agreement. The litigation in Pepperell had to do with the impact on the Jersey Street Well, which is adjacent to this subdivision. And part of the resolution was that the Town of Pepperell would provide public water and public sewer to the subdivision and that is.
So that's all working?
That's all worked out, right. So there are no septic systems.
And the other item I want to point out is, in my mind, the trust is on the hook until the results of this working properly are completed. In other words, those who enter into an agreement with the developer to fix this need to put wording in there that's, that's not just do the construction.
Absolutely.
Show the results.
Correct.
And we don't go off the hook and we don't drop that bond until the results are shown, just have solved the problem.
That's correct.
Okay, I have a question now. So when was this subdivision finished? Was it last year? I mean, is?
It's not.
When did it achieve, when, when did it achieve the status of it where it is now? I mean, why is the, if this property was purchased, sorry, transferred to another developer in 2014, and yet in 2018, this flooding started happening before these individuals, or after these individuals already purchased their homes, therefore they weren't aware of this? What, what transpired to not make that prevalent to the homeowners? Is this just a bad year for flooding? Is this a once in a 10-year occurrence, a once in a five-year occurrence? What's the situation going on here? Why is this taking so long to come to manifest? Does anybody know that?
I am not an engineer, but this past fall, there was an extremely high amount of rainfall and creating a very high groundwater table. And then the infiltrator systems are surging the groundwater and exacerbating the problem because without the overflow, there is nowhere for the water to go. And that is my layman's understanding of the situation. And there might be someone else on the Stormwater Committee who might want to give that a better explanation.
Allison, you want to answer my question?
I don't want to answer your question. I wanted to kind of rephrase it and question. So it appears that between design and construction, that the groundwater in this area rose 12 feet.
Dramatically, yeah.
Which as a civil engineer doesn't, doesn't make any sense. I mean, the, so you're, I would love to know whether we need to go back to Niche or whom to understand what extraordinary events have.
Well, we had, we met with officials in the Town of Pepperell this afternoon. George and Ed and I and Nick and Takashi went and met with our counterparts in the Town of Pepperell, including their town engineer. And I thought it was an interesting observation from their town engineer because the Jersey Street Well is nearby. And he said because there was so much rain in the fall, their, their pumping of the Jersey Street Well was much, much, much lower than normal because of the wet season. And as you probably know, when they, when they pump a public drinking water well, it depresses the water table. And they weren't, they weren't pumping the well to normal levels at all, which may have had some impact on what the elevation of the water table is. That 12-foot differential is a mystery, I think, to everybody who has been involved in this. We don't have any answer, but rather than sort of trying to figure out why the water table is so much higher now, we've been trying to figure out how do we go from here and solve the problem.
And have folks in the Town of Pepperell seen similar water table rise? I mean, does the explanation make sense for, you know, a foot?
Yeah, absolutely. But they've had some problems in Pepperell, but nothing to the extent of the problems that are happening on Olivia Way.
Because the Pepperell area is higher, their elevation is higher.
Yeah, the Pepperell area is about three feet higher.
I guess the reason for my question is because not that this is, this is a terrible situation. If it, if it's a non-recurring situation or a once in a 20, 30 years situation, certainly putting something in and granting some temporary relief, you know, to get the water out of there, maybe push it to other streets, might be something the select board could help with. Rather than with approval perhaps the Stormwater Committee to push it into other areas rather than creating this complicated process by the legislature and the Conservation Commission. I'm not sure, I don't know.
I would say it's probably not how stormwater works. I mean, if you have this volume.
You've also said that 12 feet is a very strange.
The change from 12 feet to nothing.
You know, to me, it, it would push my questioning back to the original test pits and design. To Michelle's point, that does nothing to remedy anything on the ground, but.
Yeah, I appreciate everybody's insights. I just, I'm a little confused how this can happen, but that's okay.
Because it doesn't make sense.
Right. Yes, please. Grab the microphone, please.
As a resident of Olivia Way who has lived through this, I understand that there's stormwaters and I understand that, you know, 100-year rains. But we had minimal snow this year. We may have had a soggy fall, but nothing to the extent that we've had in other years. So I don't want us to lose sight of the fact that there is no temporary measure. This has to be a permanent, at least for the city, for the people who live on Olivia Way. To say, you know, can we do this as opposed to that? We're gonna be here in 10 years when we have a winter where we have 100 inches and that system's gonna fail and we're gonna be back here asking you guys for an easement. So now that we have the developer willing to do the work, we ask of you guys to work with him to get this easement going so that we can enjoy our homes, just like the rest of the people of Groton that we've paid so much money for, so that we're not here in 10 years asking you guys for the same thing.
That's fair. Michelle, yeah?
And I would like to add that in, in my tenure of working here, there were two other similar emergency situations. One was a house on Anthony Drive that was severely impacted by Groton Residential Gardens, which also has subsurface infiltrators and the drainage system and the detention basin on that development was less than two feet from the high groundwater. And we litigated with Robert Walker. He went to housing court, we went to civil court. And the only remedy to that flooding problem, which was very severe, I'm sure Josh remembers how severe that was, was to go to Mastio T and get permission for the overflow from that drainage system to tie into the state highway drainage system in 119, which takes the water to the Nashville River. And that was, and then Partridge Berry Woods, when Partridge Berry Woods River Bend Drive was under construction during the first year, many of the homes at Partridge Berry Woods were severely impacted. And that took an engineering solution as well. But we have to, we have to do something that's a permanent solution.
All right, thank you. I'd like to wrap this up. We have a lot of, a lot to get through tonight.
One more question.
Yes, please.
Are we confident that the designed plan will solve the problem?
Who designed it, that is my question. Who designed it, when, where?
The developer did not continue to use David Ross Associates, who was the original designer and is using Doug Lee's from Tinsborough, who we have worked with. And there were no guarantees, but we certainly, it's our best shot.
So is this a direct discharge system that'll capture the overflow through the existing catch basins and then discharge it into the wetland?
It, it's not going into the wetland. It's going into the conservation land, which is an old gravel pit and is going to be.
So it's sand and gravels underneath?
Right, a retention basin. This is a previously disturbed site. This is not pristine.
Michelle, all right, one last thing, John?
May I suggest that an engineering firm other than Niche be brought in to do the peer review of the new fix? Let's just start with people who have no involvement in it and get that opinion. And maybe also get one from Niche, but let's have somebody independent from those involved take a look at that drawing.
I think guys, we'd like to work with you to solve this, but we hope it's the solve. And not, as you say, be back here in 10 years because that didn't work. So let's try to make sure we bolt proof this as much as we can. All right, we're gonna move on to other articles. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. Mr. Chairman, Article 1 is the annual article that here reports. Article 2 is the article for the elected officials' compensation, which is contained in the budget article. And then Article 3 is the wage and classification update, which gives the personnel, bylaw employees, the three of them, the same benefits that the supervisors' union gets, and that's a 2% cost of living adjustment and FY 2020. So now I want to jump to Article 4, which is the budget article. And I want to spend a couple of minutes talking about where we stand with that. So if you give me one second here. I sent out this afternoon, I sent out this afternoon a, let's see, where am I here? I thought I had it ready to go. Here we go. A document that would allow me to walk through where we are and talk about the budget with the finance committee and the selectmen and where we stand. And to also update you as to what transpired at the finance committee meeting Friday morning. Josh and I think John came in towards the end of the meeting and six of the seven members of the finance committee were there, along with the finance team. But basically where we are now is the original budget submitted to you on December 31st had a, had a, an amount of $39,663,000. We were right at the levy limit. There was no surplus. We anticipated the tax rate at that time on that budget to be eighteen dollars and seventy cents a thousand and an increase in the average tax bill of two hundred and seventy-one dollars. And the average tax bills are home valued at four hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. Since that time, we received additional information. The superintendent's budget had an increase of two hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars. Neshoba Tech had an increase in their assessment that I had from the original budget of forty-three, five oh seven. And we talked about two additional firefighters that would impact the budget, sixty-four thousand, thirty-nine dollars, creating increases of three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars and a new budget total of forty million, forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars. To offset those budget increases, we were using what was in the governor's proposed budget, which had a state aid increase of fifty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. I proposed, because we were having a mild winter at the time, I was carrying two hundred thousand in the snow and ice deficit, so I said we can reduce that down to fifty thousand. The library state aid offset in the governor's budget was nineteen hundred dollars less. And they had state charges, two thousand, eighty dollars more than I was carrying in my estimated budget. So that had offsets of a hundred and five thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars, which gave us a deficit at that time of two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars. We spent a lot of time Friday morning talking to the finance committee, trying to come up with ways to do this. And we also took into consideration the, the school committee's vote the other day to use some of their E and D to lower our assessment. So what I did is I said, okay, let's look at some different scenarios to, to reduce the budget. Because one of the things that the finance committee was concerned about was using the E and D from the school committee, which we appreciate. It's a one-time revenue source, which would require us to make that deficit up, to make that up in two thousand twenty-one, which would make the situation difficult for us. So we're trying to figure out ways that, thank you, school committee, but are there other ways for us to, to, to address that? So the finance committee asked me to come up with two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars worth of reductions. So the way that I did that is I said, okay, let's eliminate the snow and ice deficit that we were carrying of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we change the way we fund that, because we've always carried it in, in, in the next fiscal year to offset it. But in fiscal nineteen, we would change the way we do that and we would use available funds at the Springtown meeting to lower the deficit. Right now, the deficit is fourteen thousand dollars. Correct, Patricia?
Correct.
So making, making up fourteen thousand dollars would not be a major problem at the, at the Springtown meeting. We have, we can use free cash, we can use the overlay surplus, we can do many things to offset that. Then these are proposed budget reductions that I am not in favor of in the least because I think it would, it would impact services that were provided to our residents. You would, you know, close Sajison Beach. I would make the sewer commission very, very.
We wouldn't close the beach.
Oh, we would eliminate the lifeguards. I'm sorry, eliminate the lifeguards. I'm, I'm sorry, you're right. It would eliminate the lifeguards at Sajison Beach. I don't want to upset the sewer commission, but I would recommend that they take over and pay a hundred percent of the sewer debt. We would reduce the increase in the assessors office that we had put in the five hours. We would eliminate funding for the local inspector that was a backup to our building commission. He was on vacation. We would eliminate funding for TADS, which is the mental health hotline that we have in conjunction with the towns of Dunstable and the Groton Dunstable Regional School District. We would eliminate funding for Code Red, which is the reverse nine-one, uh, one situation that we have. We would reduce senior center van hours and, and try to, to, we have two vans now. We had increased the budget a few years ago, but we were running a little bit less than we were carrying in the budget. So we would recommend that reduction. We would reduce health insurance by thirteen thousand dollars and take a gamble that open enrollment doesn't work out the way I had anticipated it working out to the, to the finance committee and the selectmen on February thirteenth. And then this is probably the, the most painful one. And I don't want to get shot by the library trustees.
She's right next to you.
I know, that's why I'm, I'm a little nervous about this one. But we would eliminate Sunday hours in the summer reading program in the budget, which would be a reduction of twenty-six thousand, which could cause problems with the state aid money because of their book budget.
It would.
Okay, so we may not be able to do this.
So before you go on, let me just state from the financial perspective that nobody should be looking at these and saying, this is what we are doing?
Correct.
These are just potential things that were thrown on a board. There are other things the finance committee and the town manager are working on.
Which I'm going to get to.
Again, this is just a notion that if we were to go out and try to find two seventy-nine K in reductions in order to balance the budget, again, these are some ideas. Don't take this that these are highly likely because at this point, they're, they're just ideas.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. Because again, I don't want to get shot by the library trustees.
Or the finance committee.
Or the finance committees. So if, if we were to do this, there would be no change in the tax rate and there'd be no change in the average tax bill increase. So then you have, what's scenario number two? Okay, Groton Dunstable has voted, the school committee voted last week, and I confirmed that today with the business manager, that our assessment will be reduced, the superintendent's budget. Their, their assessment and their budget would still be what would equivalent, would be the equivalent of a twenty-one million, five hundred and seventy-three thousand dollar assessment. But they would use four hundred thousand dollars of E and D to offset that increase. And Groton's budget would go down three hundred and eight thousand and Dunstable's would go down their percentage amount as well. If that happens, we would then be thirty thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars under the levy limit. The tax rate would drop to eighteen sixty-eight and the average tax bill would go up to two hundred and sixty-two dollars. So that's where we are right now with the vote of the Groton Dunstable Regional School District using E and D. I'm concerned and members of the finance committee were concerned that what that does is it makes fiscal year twenty-one more difficult because the school committee will not have that E and D and they have a projected budget increase next year that was going to be five point eight nine percent, which will then become seven point eight two percent because we would have to make up that three hundred thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty-one because the school committee wouldn't have the available free cash to spend next year. So one of the things that we talked about, and this is something that Josh has on the agenda for later in the meeting under other business, would be, okay, let the school district still use the three hundred and eight thousand dollars. But we have a need in the fire department, and it's not just the school need. We have a need in the fire department and we also have the Neshoba Tech need that we still need to, to fund these in future years. So why don't we do an override this year of the three hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars? Now, we talked about the two seventy-nine. But all that did, if you did three oh eight or two seventy-nine, it made next year's override more based on the projection. So it's six or one half dozen of another. You could do two seventy-nine or you could do three oh eight. The impact over two fiscal years would be the same. So if we did do the override this year, it would be planning for next year and it wouldn't change the anticipated tax rate in fiscal year twenty, but it would prepare us better for fiscal year twenty-one. And it would also say to the voters in this town, do you want us to increase the fire department? And I know some people have talked about having a vote on, on the fire department for fiscal year, for the, for this fiscal year. So that's the scenario number three. And then the other document that I, that I provided for you was, okay, based on this, based on these three scenarios, I had projected on the original budget on twelve thirty-one that we would need about one point six million dollars worth of overrides over the next five fiscal years, starting with two hundred and forty thousand dollars next year and then moving through, if the budget stayed as I had originally presented it to you. Under scenario number one, which would reduce the town budget by a hundred and, by two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, and then I carried that out in a five-year projection, keep in mind that the school number would still go up big time next year to make up for that three hundred and eight thousand dollar deficit. And even though we're eliminating a hun, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand in this year's budget and eliminating snow and ice, we would still need a four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar increase in, in the budget next year for an override. So we need a cumulative five-year total of overrides of one point eight million dollars under that particular scenario, if you reduce the budget this year. Scenarios two and three are pretty much identical, but it spreads the pain. You, instead of doing a major seven hundred and sixty-four thousand dollar override next year because of the use of E and D, you would, you would spread it out over two years and then it would actually reduce the five-year total by a modest amount of money. So that's where we are right now. That's what the finance committee is under consideration. And I know Josh wanted to talk about a, a five-year override or a single override. So we tried to put this together for you and I'd be happy to answer any questions. But that's where the budget is right now under Article Four on the warrant.
Josh?
Well, I'm, I'm not necessarily ready to talk about a five-year override while I have talked about it in previous meetings. Certainly, the, um, the thrust of the conversation that occurred with the finance committee on Friday was how do we deal with the situation moving into town meeting for the fiscal twenty twenty operating budget? And given the scenario, and certainly I think that both Dunstable and Groton appreciate the four hundred thousand dollar reduction by the use of E and D from the Groton Dunstable Regional School District, to utilize that one-time source of revenue in order to finance operational budgets of the town of Groton, to finance Neshoba Tech's budget and to finance the Groton Dunstable budget, as well as consideration of adding two new firefighters, isn't in our best interest. Because using a one-time source of revenue in order to fund operational expenses is only going to come back and bite us in the following fiscal year potentially twofold. So by looking at Mark's spreadsheet, if you look at the three hundred and eight thousand, seven thirty-one plus the four forty-eight, one seventy-eight, you're looking at close to three quarters of a million dollars required in fiscal twenty-one if we utilize the three oh eight to finance the operational needs for twenty twenty. So what I asked the finance committee, and I think that we got a five to one vote from the finance committee on Friday, was to move forward with an override, which would allow the town voters to make a decision at the polls, rather than in a microcosm of town meeting, which is woefully under attended, to move forward with augmenting the budget to add new firefighters. I don't think that's the way to do it. I think when you reach out to the electorate as a whole, you offer them the opportunity to weigh in on whether or not they want to move forward with something. So we do have a recommendation from the chief for three years in a row to add additional staff. We added two. We're looking to add two more. We have a recommendation from the fire committee task force to add two additional firefighters as well. We're waiting for this board to take its formal position, even though we have a straw poll position, in favor of moving forward. So I just came up with the concept and asked the finance committee what their opinion was on making a recommendation to our board about moving forward with a one-year override in terms of funding all of these various things. Now, fast forward and very quickly to the five-year scenario. For the last couple of months, I've been advocating for a two million dollar override to fund the next five operational years that are required to meet the projections that the town manager has offered. And those numbers are hold and very true. I think that it wouldn't be prudent at this point to ask either the finance committee or the town meeting voters, nor the ballot voters, to move forward with a two million dollar override until this new tri-board that is being put together, which will work with a finance committee member, I believe a member of this board and school committee members, working with the school administration, as well as the town manager, to understand what the true operational needs are of both the school departments and the municipal departments. Therefore, I think it's extremely premature to ask for a two million dollar override. That doesn't negate the fact that we're in a situation this year where we need to add personnel and fund the needs of both school districts. So that said, we have a recommendation in front of us at the moment for two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars by a five to one vote from the FinCom for the select board to consider moving forward with the budget for this year. Is that a fair statement?
One hundred percent correct.
What, what is the recommendation? I'm sorry, can, can that be codified, Gary?
Yes, it can.
Thank you.
So it just adds a little bit more depth to the, sort of, what the finance committee said. So if you, if you look at the numbers up there, what the finance committee is concerned about is scenario number two, which is that we end up with a three-quarter of a million deficit heading into next year. Again, to, people should understand, these are just merely forecasts. That doesn't mean we will end up with a three-quarter of a million dollar deficit next year. It could be larger, it could be smaller, we don't know. But currently, that is what is forecasted based upon the numbers the town manager is using for a forecast as well as the numbers that the district has provided us for a forecast. But that is a scenario we want to avoid. We cannot absorb a three-quarter of a million dollar deficit without significant cuts to the town, to the, to the, the town and the district or through, or an override or some other mechanism. You just, you cannot easily absorb, and I'm, I'm not sure you can absorb a three-quarter of a million dollar deficit. When you look at scenario three, just to be clear, and tell me if I'm wrong, Mark, but the twenty twenty-one number does not include the change that we could do to snow and ice deficit, right?
I, yes, it does. I took it out on this scenario. I took out the, the snow and ice deficit because otherwise it would be two hundred thousand.
But what, the other thing I, I was questioning is, is it doesn't include if we find a, a, an additional one hundred and twenty-eight K of savings this year?
Correct.
Okay. So the finance committee, regardless of, of, again, the list that he put up there, that is not the list that you will see, we need, we have a lot of work to do. But the finance committee would, would, it still has a lot of work to do to see if we can find savings. And, and we would like to find a hundred and twenty-eight K savings, right? So if we found a hundred and twenty-eight K savings, that number is not four forty-eight, right? It's, it's a three, three twenty, right? You, you start getting down into ranges that, that are more manageable, A. And B, that, that if you look at the five-year forecast that we've seen in the last five years, we've seen those sort of numbers. And when we get to those years, we've, you, for whatever reason, we've been able to ride through them. Again, we don't think you can ride through a three-quarter of a million dollar deficit. Additionally, as, as, as was pointed out, we are very uncomfortable in, in town. We, we, we have a mantra that we will not use one-time funding sources to fund ongoing operating expenses. And so what that means is unless you know a funding source will continue on and on and on, right, over years, you shouldn't put something into your budget that you know you're going to have to pay for on and on and on over years. And we definitely appreciate the school committee's ability to use their E and D. But, you know, whether it's their E and D or our E and D, you know, we view it sort of the same. It's funding and operating expense and we, we are very nervous about that. I would also say that, and I think this is a point that Josh made, that, actually, I don't think it was a point that Josh made. The district themselves have been in the process for the last year or so and are continuing through the process of working through the recommendations that they received from the external audit to find efficiencies in their budget. They are not through that process. They are continuing to have discussions with the community at large as to what they value. So, you know, I think, you know, with the work of the tri-board and the work that the district is doing amongst themselves, I think we are in a situation where it's not exactly clear where we will end up next year or for the next five years. So, you know, this is a difficult year. I think it's a difficult decision. I don't think, I don't think there's a slam dunk easy answer for anyone. But again, I think from the finance committee's perspective, what our recommendation was, was that we wouldn't use a one-time, a one-time set of income in order to, to fund operating expense. And so our recommendation would potentially be to do a override this year, which would avoid us doing that, A. And B, it, it's the only way that this goes to the ballot to ask the people in town whether, whether they want to add the two additional firefighters. So I hope that added some level of explanation.
So your recommendation is that the select board consider adding an override to the ballot at two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars or three hundred and eight thousand dollars?
I, I actually, at this point, can't remember if we voted two seventy-nine through.
Yeah, your vote was two seventy-nine.
Two seventy-nine.
Your vote was two seventy-nine. I, I.
And the, and the reason, the reason I think was because we're thirty, thirty K under already.
Correct.
So two seventy-nine gets us to three oh eight.
Okay, all right. So thank you, all right.
So what was the amount?
I got to clarify.
Two seventy-nine.
The, the, the five to one vote from the finance committee was for a two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollar override in FY to, to balance, quote unquote, or to allow for potential balancing of, of the, of the twenty twenty budget.
With two new firefighters.
Correct.
I, I think the actual recommendation was that if the, if, if the select board determines that this is the year to add two new firefighters, that we would recommend this approach to adding those two firefighters.
That's correct.
Okay. Any, wow. Sorry, I'm just absorbing that, that, that idea here. Josh, are you, I know you're on a timetable here.
Yeah, I apologized to everyone in attendance, but my mother just got taken to the hospital and I am going to leave. I would ask Dawn to allow me to remote participate. And if that's okay, I will get in my car and drive to Salem.
Give me five minutes, I'll call you.
Thank you.
Okay. Becky, you've got your hand raised.
Yeah, I just.
Oh, Bud, you wanted to speak. You're, I'm sorry.
Can I just ask, follow on Gary's statement was, if we voted for the two firefighters, you wanted us to, you would recommend an override. What if we do not vote for the two firefighters? Is it doable without an override? Is it doable without an override?
Still using one-time revenue sources.
260, $64,000 less, is that correct?
It is, it is still, I mean, they are still using one-time revenue sources that'll hit us next year. Again, the Finance Committee, I think, based on a previous meeting and a sense of the committee, we are going to look to see if we can decrease the municipal operating budget by about 128K. So there are other things that are coming into play that make it not as obvious, I think, at this point, what to do if we don't hire the two firefighters.
Thank you.
Bud, thank you.
Two things. One is, I just want to clarify what we keep. I'm not sure a lot of the people understand the cost of the firefighters. I just want to make sure we all understand what we have in this budget versus what the cost of a firefighter is. In this budget that were proposed is $64,000, and that is a net budget number. The cost of two firefighters, to hire two firefighters without finding other savings, the cost is probably 160 or 170K. That's if benefits are taken. So the cost of two firefighters is 160,000, not 64. So when we get the 160, then there are savings due to money that was in the fire budget. There's savings that are due to probably benefits we already had, something. So the savings that come down, that take that 160 number down to 64. But we've been quoted a lot, you've heard a lot, 64,000 X dollars in the rate. That's a net number. So it's the correct number, but I just want to make sure people understand that in fact-
It's the actual increase in the budget if we add two firefighters.
That's right. The cost of two firefighters, many people think the cost of two, they shouldn't, but they do. Now, all they read is 64,000. That is not the cost of hiring two firefighters. That's a net impact on the budget.
It's the delta of what those two firefighters add to our budget, minus what costs.
It's like last year, we added two, and we had revenue that took all the 150 up. And this year, we have cost savings taken, not all up, but a lot. So I just want to make sure we quote it, we put it places, that we all understand that that's a net number.
Right.
And the other thing is, like Gary said, when you look at a lot of these, on the chart that Mark had and they're on the reduction to budgets, the 179, 279, there are numbers, there are things in there that, the reason that we need to think hard on this is there's items in there that are, you know, near and dear to people, like the beach, library. There's accounting changes like the snow and ice, the accounting change for the funding, the sewer. Those are all different from what we've had in the past. So we want to make sure that before any of those happen, putting them on the ballot is, you know, if you put them on the ballot, said, here's what the override is, it's just not potentially for the firefighters, and it's just not for the Shobat Tech. It's for many items that allows us to get whole next year, or not whole, but, you know, at least half of it back. So I want to make sure that, like Gary said, those numbers are not, you know, something we want to just arbitrarily think we're going to take and make savings on.
All right, thank you, Bud. Art, you've got a statement, and then Allison.
Yeah, I just want to make it clear what the motion was that was voted. Five-to-one, and I'll read it to you, because it's in the minutes. The Finance Committee recommended that the Select Board members seek an override of Proposition Two and a Half to fund the anticipated budget increases needed to hire two additional firefighters and cover the debt increase with the Shobat Valley Technical High School, while not taking advantage of the Groton Dunstable Regional School District E and D budget for FY '20. The Finance Committee intention in this regard is to cause the town's FY 2020 operating budget to remain at 308,000 under the levy limit, and thereby minimize the impact of budget increases anticipated in FY '21. That was an amendment. It was voted on six-to-one, and then the vote on the main motion that I just read was five-to-one. It did not include any constraints relative to whether the Select Board voted specifically to add two firemen. I read the motion and has voted.
Okay, Allison, yes, thank you.
So I guess I want to start out and kind of apologize upfront, because I am really having trouble formulating intelligent, rather than purely emotional, statements right now. I certainly understand the difficulty that the Finance Committee, you know, feels and thinks about when they look at using either E and D or free cash to fund operating. That's not comfortable. That said, I think that scenario number three ultimately almost guarantees that next year we will need to cut 450,000, or whatever that number turns into in the next year, out of our municipal budget, because I think it's, there is no evidence whatsoever that I have ever seen to think that the voters are going to approve two years in a row, operating increases, particularly when we're laying it out very clearly that there are four more to come potentially. I also am very uncomfortable, so, Mark, I guess I would turn to you and ask whether, do all three scenarios treat snow and ice in the same way?
No, snow and ice.
So we're comparing an apple and an orange and a banana, which is a problem.
No, no.
No, it's not?
Let me correct that. Snow and ice, I misspoke before. And the scenario one, I showed you $150,000 reduction in snow and ice, and then that would go away forever. Under scenarios two and three, I leave snow and ice in the budget all five years.
At $200,000.
Correct.
Okay, so you're, I was incorrect. We have an apple and two oranges, which is still, they're not the same. And to be comparing them as if they are, I think, does incredible disservice to the voters who are trying to follow this and trying to make intelligent decisions.
I'm going to disagree with you, Allison, only because, under scenario one, I specifically call out snow and ice. Under scenarios two and three, we leave snow and ice in the budget, and I clearly state that. If it's not clear, I apologize. By the school committee reducing the assessment by $308,000, it puts us 30,000 under the levy limit. I don't mention snow and ice there, and I don't mention snow and ice in scenario number three. So I'm not deceiving. I'm sorry if it's not clear to you. Let me clarify it right now. And under scenario one, you see the elimination. Under scenarios two and three, we're not eliminating anything. It's just a reduction in the Groton Dunstable Regional School District's operating assessment. I'm sorry if that wasn't clear. Maybe I should have been more clear.
Yeah, I, I'm not having trouble following that personally, but I think it is not clear. The other concern I have in general is, is kind of the somewhat nonchalant treatment that we're giving, this kind of major budgeting paradigm. That if we're going to change the way we budget snow and ice, first of all, I'm not sure that's the first paradigm that I would look to necessarily. But I would, I'm not entirely comfortable with us making that decision based on what the numbers look like right now or for next year. That's more of a policy-level discussion. You know, other paradigms that I think we would be well-served to look at and understand as a community would be how grants are included or not included in the budget, and then how revenue and expense estimates are done at a, you know, kind of at a baseline level, how closely they reflect recent years, findings and numbers. So I'm just incredibly frustrated right now. I recognize there's no easy answer financially, but I'm incredibly frustrated that we are not finding a way to make any of this clear or transparent for the voters.
I have a hand up from Marlena. Go ahead, Marlena, thank you.
So I just want to make sure I understand, kind of like, when I hear of the different scenarios, it almost screams of a strategy. And the strategy that I'm seeing here is, I understand the concept, not utilizing one-time funds. And as a reminder, we have two member towns in our district, not just Groton. We have Dunstable. And their municipal leaders came to the school committee and requested help. This year, knowing that they will be, have to go for an override to fund their municipal and school services. They're at a point where they can't afford not only their municipal, but all their schools' responsibilities. They know this, and they're going to basically be spending a year educating their voters so that they can understand what will happen if an override is not approved. There's serious issues over in Dunstable. And this particular use of E and D will help them overcome it this year. So that had a lot, if not 99%, to do with why the school committee voted to use E and D this year. So that's something to consider. So if I'm understanding this correctly, considering E and D doesn't exist in this scenario, an override would fund firemen, Nishoba, miscellaneous things for this year. We would remain under the levy because of the, still, we are using the E and D. And because we're remaining under the levy, that levy would then be leveraged for FY '21 budget, avoiding an override back-to-back for '20 and '21, leaving the balances of what we see deficits of 200 to 300,000 consecutive years, which is actually less if everyone looks back at your prior budgets in the budget booklets at town meeting. You'll see that the deficits are either equal or actually higher in previous years, but we've, we managed to overcome them, as it was mentioned. We have a working group that is going to be put together, that is put together and already scheduled our first meeting. As it was mentioned, the district has been making changes, and we managed to find efficiencies of 400,000, almost 400,000. We're at the tail end of that. We're not going to find another 400,000. So I want to make sure everyone is on the same page. What's left is minimal. So we are trying to work together in regards to find the requirements that we have to provide in the nice hats. I honestly am very uncomfortable about the thought process of needing a five-year override at this moment, because just from the scenario here of number three, if we were to do that, these are balances that we have overcome in prior years. We have overcome in prior years, and we did not need an override last year. We didn't need one the year before that, and they keep on being forecasted. I feel like Chicken Little's falling, and it's not. The sky's not falling quite yet. So when we look at that, I think that there's, there's almost a stress level that's going along with this sheet that I think needs to be better put in perspective. And I hope the working group might help get us through to plan as well.
Mr. Chairman, may I respond? The bottom line, though, Marlena, is if the school committee did not decide to help out the town of Dunstable with the use of its E and D, the town of Groton, based on the superintendent's proposed budget that the school committee is operating under, would cause a $279,000 deficit in the town of Groton in fiscal year '20, right?
Based on your projections, not capturing grants, yes.
Not capturing what grants?
911 grants, or even, or even, or even the vans that transport our seniors.
Grants, and I would never recommend to the Finance Committee or to the Selectmen that we use one-time grants to fund operating revenue, because that's what happened to the school department back in 2010 when they used our money, which ended up costing us a $1.5 million deficit in fiscal year '13.
That actually is not what happened. You should read that audit.
Let's settle this down. Settle this down, please.
What happened was, is the school committee in the past, with unfortunate, unstable administration, ended up approving a budget that had a one-time, not an annual grant, a one-time grant of 278,000. And then the rest was a complicated, multiple different things. But if you read the audit, it's fairly informative, and that's exactly where it is. The school budget right now, so everyone is aware of the risk that we're all undertaking, has $680,000 of annual grants that we get every year. If those grants were not received for the last decade, we would then be out that money. 600, so if, so if the school committee, or if this, if our peer boards believe that we are being irresponsible in the way that we budget, we could, we could adopt the same methodology. But honestly, I would not support that. Because what that would do is, instead of having a $764,000 increase, we would have a $1.3 million increase. Because we would be doing the same budgeting practices. Now, it's not a matter of wrong or right, but if you're going to say the schools are triggering the override, and we're not, and we're choosing to have different methodologies in the budgeting, you know, it's the words we choose.
I didn't say the school's triggering this override. I was saying if the school committee, you know-
The increase of the, of the school-approved budget is basically bring us over our levy.
And so doesn't the addition of two firefighters next year as well? So I'm, it's just an odd magnitude.
Our total finances at this stage put us in an override situation. Unless we make cuts or pass an override. So let's table that. I don't want this battle happening. Not on my watch. I budded Ashley's motion from the floor, and then I've got John, and then Allison.
And we talked about this last week. The issue is, which we are going to attempt to correct over the next few years with this task force, the issue is that we have revenue of three and a half to 3.75, and we have spending higher. That's the issue. And, you know, you can say you're going to have an override for five, six, seven, eight years, but as long as you don't fix that imbalance, you will. And we've got to figure out how to fix that imbalance. And it's going to happen within the next year or two in order not to have this override. It may be fixed next year as well. And, you know, that's something we'll have to, you know, work with. Because the issue becomes 80% of our spending, I keep saying this, but for some reason we don't listen. 80% of our spending is between wage and benefits. If we don't fix that line, we're never going to fix anything. And you have to spend 3% probably as a town and a school. That's it, 3%. If you spend that and you get 3.6% or 7% in revenue, because of the famous $10 million state thing that never moves, we will be okay. But you can't spend much more than 3%. And we are spending exactly higher, not exactly higher. We are spending higher because wages and benefits are higher than that. And until we get to a contract, which is going to be 22, I think, for the, I think they're both, are they the same now, Marlena?
Yeah, ours is out next year, so.
Same as ours? So we're going to be in sync. The whole point is, we have to figure out how we fix the 80% number. The rest of it almost doesn't matter. You do get these bluebirds. But we need to fix that number, and that's what this, we need to talk about as a school and a town. If we don't fix that number, every year we're going to have big numbers. Because 80% of the number is driven by numbers that are 3% or 4%, 5%, 6%, 7%. And I understand benefits, et cetera, but we can't have those kind of numbers. So we've got to fix that, and just hoping, working together, we can fix it. Until that happens, we've got a problem this year, we've got a problem next year, and then the contracts come due. And if we can't fix it then, we're going to have a problem, problem, problem. Whether it's a five-year override, or we cut a bunch of people out of the town, and a bunch of people out of school, whatever happens is going to happen, because we're not fixing the problems. It's getting bigger and bigger. Each year, they become a bigger part of the number. And they're going to overtake the number. So we need to fix that. And that's what this group needs to do. All this other stuff, spending-wise, almost doesn't matter, except for that salary line and the benefit line.
John?
Yeah, I've got a couple of things. Number one, just a quick sharing of my thoughts on a five-year, $2 million budget. I read an article, and I believe it was the town of Grafton, that did one of these five-year budgets. And surprised, surprise, they wound up at the end with a great big wall, not smooth sailing on down the stream. So I would not advocate, I'm not advocating for or against it, but I would want to hear the Finance Committee saying, yeah, this is a good thing to do, and we're confident that we'll, where we'll be at the end of that five years before we take that step. It's important for me. The other thing I want to comment on is, I've spent some time since the meeting at the library, at the high school, around this issue of trying to figure out how to get grants showing up in the town's financial reports. And Bud and I had a conversation on Friday morning after the Finance Committee meeting, and we talked about that. The reality is, we only have one large grant. And it's, it is of a very designated, specified thing that it can be used for. The other grants that we have, and I don't have the total number yet, but I understand it's relatively small. The 320 grant, which is an average over the last several years, 220,000. Beg your pardon?
About 230, 230,000.
230. I've got- Two-hundred-and-thirty, I've got, two-hundred-and-thirty instead of thirty-two, okay. Uh, two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars and, um, it's a type of grant, it can only be used for things directly related to regionalization of our dispatch systems. It can't be used for anything else. We don't get a pot of money that we can just spend. We actually have to spend town money and then put in a claim. So it's very difficult to, to look at some way to make all that show up, um, in the, in the method of which it's distributed. Um, so Bud and I talked and I'm sure he's going to talk with our, our town accountant, um, about showing in, in the financial statements at least where we're applying those grant monies in the budget, you know, where in the budget, um, we're offsetting, um, debt with, um, grant money. And I don't know at this point that we can go much further than that, but we're definitely looking at it because I want things to be, uh, as transparent as we can possibly make them, but we can't just, we have to go about that in a way that makes sense from, from an accounting perspective and a reporting perspective. And I think we're looking at that.
All right. We have a lot of articles to get through tonight in our public hearing and we could discuss this override situation for the next probably three hours. I'm okay with staying until midnight, but I don't think our, our extended staff here and our citizens would like to do that. So what I recommend is that we're going to have this conversation again next week and the week after. Let's table this now, if, if that's agreeable to you, Gary, and continue this next week.
I, I, I fully support tabling it now because as part of the, uh, hearing on the warrant article, we're not supposed, we don't have to debate the whole thing. We don't have to solve it here. But what I would say is that I do think that after the public hearing and even after the finance committee goes to start debating, I think you guys need to debate this more tonight because we don't have time, right? Because of the question of the firemen and adding two more firemen came in so late, right? This is unfortunately cramming us down and if we want to pursue hiring two more firemen, we don't have the luxury of waiting another week. We really need, right, uh, select board, make a decision. Are we hiring them? Are we not, right? Uh, if we are hiring them, then we can start focusing on, okay, how are we financing? If we're not, right, then the finance committee, by the way, still has a lot of work to do because, you know, we're still, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I'm not speaking for the committee, we're in the hole, the, right, you know, it's E and D which is making us look positive. We take the E and D out even without hiring the two firemen, we still have a problem this year. So I, I, I don't think, I don't think you can wait until next week, but I, I absolutely support tabling this at this point so we can continue with the rest of the public hearing.
So, uh, I hear, I hear the, I, yes, give me just a moment to respond and then we'll get to your question. I hear the request. Unfortunately, I don't have an agenda item tonight to be able to discuss this in full and go down it.
It's on the budget, it's, it's part of the budget, Barry.
Well, all right. So we, we can consider it under item number six. So let's, we'll continue. Um, and, and I appreciate that request, Gary. Uh, you had a question?
I just have a question for Mark. Um, in the four scenarios that you presented, have you included, um, the eighty-six-thousand dollars we need for the Prescott School?
Uh, that is coming up and that would become out of free cash and we're going to come up to that pretty soon, John.
Okay. It's not in those numbers?
No, no, because that's a one-time, uh, free cash transfer. Um, Mr. Chairman, Article Five is our annual contribution to the OPEB trust. We're going to transfer a hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand dollars to keep the net present value liability from growing. I'd be happy to answer any questions with that.
Are there any questions on that item?
I actually did, did have a question. Um, when I looked at the free cash and how we were going to be spending it, is there any val, I know we voted a policy that we would spend this much and we'd take it out of free cash. Is there any benefit to saying, well, there's a little bit more free cash available, we could add money into the OPEB?
We'd like to keep a balance of around two-hundred thousand in free cash. Um, so I'm already dipping below that number, so I would be uncomfortable spending more than the hundred-and-sixty-nine based on that. But we'll get to that, Becky, that's a great question. We'll get to that when we review the, the free cash number. Um, Article Six is the proposed, uh, capital budget. Item number one is a engine, uh, replacement for the, for the fire department. The total cost is six-hundred-and-fifty thousand. We would do a state house note and pay it back over five years and that would be the town's obligation each year over the next five years. Uh, service one replacement is a sixty-thousand-dollar, um, utility, uh, truck for the fire department that's, uh, used to, um, save using the larger apparatus, uh, you know, for, for inspections and things like that.
So is that a one-time cost mark or is that a?
That's a one-time, these are all, yeah, that's a one-time cost. I'll point out, Allison, the items that are over a number of years. Uh, the brush mower, forty-five thousand dollars. It is a, uh, a, a, an equipment replacement. Uh, the dump truck is the second year of five years that we did last year for the dump truck. That's forty thousand dollars. Uh, the backhoe, uh, is a replacement of ninety-five. Now, I will tell you, uh, that items five and three, um, may change because Tom is working with the light department to get a different vehicle that will accomplish both and save us some money because the light department will help with, with the cost of that. I don't have a proposal for you tonight on that, but for now, this is our capital budget. When things change, uh, we will bring it to you with a formal proposal, uh, moving forward. Our annual IT infrastructure of forty thousand dollars, this is what we use to, uh, fund our IT obligation. This will be, I think, the eighth or ninth year that we've done it that way. Uh, the dispatch upgrade, uh, this is the third of, uh, three payments of sixty thousand to get to a hundred-and-eighty-thousand, uh, dollars for the chief to, uh, make various improvements in our, uh, dispatch center. Item number, uh, eight is our annual article that we use to maintain municipal buildings, twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, on various repairs that come up, uh, over the course of the year. Uh, we want to paint the police station, do some roof repairs under Article Nine.
I had a question about that. Um, how frequently do we paint up the police station?
Uh, this is roof repairs and painting the police station. We started a project, uh, three years ago where we were replacing, um, the, the siding of the station, uh, over the course of a number of years, and I think this is the last year that we're doing that. Correct me if I'm wrong.
So it's, we're replacing the siding with cement fourth to send it over to the fire department, so once we're done, we don't paint it anymore?
I was going to say, okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Um, Article Ten is the second of four payments for the tractor-trailer unit that we bought, uh, last year. Article Eleven is our annual replacement of police cruisers. And then Article Twelve is to do some, uh, pool improvements at the country club. Article Thirteen is to, uh, replace some car paths. And item number fourteen is, uh, the, I believe, the fourth or fifth payment for the triplex greens mower that we purchased for the country club a few years ago on a, on a lease purchase. So that's a total capital budget. Any questions on any of those items?
Allison.
Mark, can you just go down by number and, and just kind of highlight which ones are already incurred and which ones we still have any kind of choice to discuss around?
Yeah, there's, there's two, there's two that you've incurred that we, that we have to fund and that's the dump truck and the, yep, number, uh, four and the, um, the, uh, tractor-trailer unit, number ten.
And the triplex mower?
Oh, the triplex mower, number fourteen, fifty-one hundred. Thank you, Don.
And the rest of those, of the ones that remain, which ones are single-year, one-time payments?
Everything but Article One, item one.
Thank you.
And again, this is, this has no impact. You can zero out the capital budget, has no impact on the operating budget. It comes from the capital stabilization fund.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions on the, uh, capital budget? Um, Article Seven is the, uh, DPW facility, uh, project that we're, uh, in the process of going out to bid. As I told the board last week, bids are due on April eighteenth and we will have those numbers to you, uh, at that time. Um, Article, uh, I'm sorry?
A number seven, do we have a, an estimate that we're?
Well, yeah, the estimate, I think I talked to the board last week and maybe I didn't. If I didn't, I apologize. Um, the estimate right now is four-point-five million dollars, uh, on the bid and we have changed the way we're doing that bid. And I thought I explained this last week, maybe I didn't. Please, anybody correct me if I'm wrong?
I don't remember it, so.
Okay.
I don't remember it.
Oh, maybe it's Friday morning I did. I apologize. I'm sorry, my meetings are running together. You'll, you'll have to forgive me. The, the building committee met last week and the estimate from the architect was four-point-five million dollars on the project. We had estimated that it would come in around three-point-five, so, and then all-in four million when you added contingencies and construction and, and things like that. So the building committee was concerned about that, that estimate. I, I stressed to the building committee at that time that an estimate is just an estimate and the reason that we don't go, uh, projects based on estimates is we want to have bids in hand on the project. So when the committee saw that estimate, they made a change in the way that they wanted to present that, in which we are going to do, the base bid is going to be the main building because that's the building that has OSHA problems, that's the building that has ventilation problems, that's the building that has cold violations that needs to be upgraded immediately. So we're going to do that as the base bid and then as an add alternate, we're going to put the second building as an add alternate, which is the vehicle storage bay. And we're going to see what the numbers come in at and we'll make a decision at that time on, on, on how to move forward. I know there were several members of the building committee here. I know John, I saw John somewhere. There's John and, and I know John's on it and David's on, on the committee. Um, so if there's anything I missed that you want to add, please feel free, but that's our strategy moving forward with the, um, DPW garage. And I, and I do apologize that I had my meetings confused.
Do you have a feel, Mark, for how much of that, first of all, is that four-and-a-half million kind of all-in?
No, the four-and-a-half million is the actual, would be the construction. All-in would be another half a million dollars. So you look at it, five million instead of, uh, the four million all-in that we had anticipated back in town meeting in the fall.
Okay. And do you have a feel for how much of that estimate is likely to come in as part of that main building? Is it just fifty-fifty or?
I think two-point, two-point-five, um, John or David, somebody help me out. John, two-point, was it two-point-five?
I think we're guessing, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I have the numbers in my office. I'm sorry, I haven't had a chance to go over them.
Hi, good evening, John Hemerle and I am chairing that committee. Uh, a couple of things. It, it is in that two-point-six-million-dollar range. It was what was estimated and I would also share that there was not a single committee member that was prepared to move forward on a four-point-five-million-dollar number and that by breaking it out the way we did, our, our goal was to give the voters at town meeting an option to vote on numbers that were originally presented and break this out into those increments. Uh, I would also share that the process in that estimate, that comes from the architect, it comes from, you know, their, their practices, their experience, but at the end of the day that the, when the RFP went out, it went out at the three-point-four-million dollars for the budget for the hard construction, which is the number that was presented to the public. Uh, there, we do not know where those numbers will come in, but certainly the companies and the GCs that will bid, be bidding for those, understand that if they want this work, they've got to get as close to that number as possible. We did leave the, the town options so that it, it all comes down to allowing the voters to decide, you know, what will be approved.
When, when do you expect that? Uh, we lost, uh, Josh, so we're calling her back. When do we expect those bids to come back? The eighteenth of March?
Yes.
So that's tomorrow?
No, no, the eighteenth of April.
Thank you. All right.
Any other questions?
Any other questions on this item?
Um, Article number eight is, is the library roof. They, similar to our project, are out to bid. Um, they, their bids are due, I believe, April twelfth. Um, they are, I think I provided you with a, with a lot of information from the library trustees on the difference between the slate roof and the, and the fake slate roof and so on and so forth. You saw the estimates, there isn't really that big a gap between the two, but the library trustees, they will have bids in hand on April twelfth, so they'll be able to tell you exactly where they are. And keep in mind that the original estimate on this was around one-point-one million. I think it's down to a million now. And there's going to be an offset under the CPA that they've applied for a grant from the community preservation committee to pay for a portion of the roof that, that's on the historic section. So the net of this article will be the bid, less whatever the CPA can fund, that would be what the town, uh, will be moving forward. The CPA is meeting next Monday to finalize their articles. That's why we're not going to talk about their articles tonight, uh, during the public hearing because they're not ready to talk about it, but once we get those final numbers, we will also have bids in hand and we'll be able to have a really good discussion on, on that.
But the CPC funds have to be approved by town meeting?
Correct.
So, so we would have perhaps take these articles out of order at the?
You would probably want to vote the, one of the portions of the CPA at the same time that you do this. Or make sure the town meeting knows if you pass this, it's expected that you need to pass the other one as well.
Well.
You'd have to probably take the.
Let's talk, let's talk, we'll talk to the moderator, by the way, but I think that it would be only wise for the public to have the, maybe the CPC articles handled earlier because there's contingency or there's items that rely on them for how much we fund. The town still should have the option to say, okay, well CPC didn't, didn't pass, we still want to fund the library at one-point-million dollars in whole.
Sure, you may want to move that up.
That's right. So I think that if, uh, I'll talk to, I can talk to Mr. Kupi about that. Um, yes, uh, John?
I just want to clarify that the one-million-dollar estimate on, on the roof is doing it with real slate.
Correct. I'm sorry if I didn't make that clear.
Well, I don't want anybody wondering out there which, which was included in that. And that seems to be the best way to go.
And, and that's more than?
Microphone, please, thank you. Yep.
Dave's out of the library, chair, uh, trustee chair. That million dollars includes fixing the gutters, fixing the drainage, fixing, um, the sunken roof. That, that's not just the slate roof.
Sure.
It's the whole project.
It's the project.
Okay, thank you.
That's why the wording says in all costs associated and related there too, because there are, when you do a roof, you have all that other stuff to do.
Okay. Uh, Allison, yeah?
So just numerically, because to me it made a tremendous difference. Um, the cost of the slate with all the other pieces was like one-point-one issue where we're talking. And if we were to do all synthetic, which I understand is not recommended by the historic district, that that really yielded a savings of around two-hundred thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, is that?
That's my recollection.
In the right ballpark?
Can I, if you grab the microphone?
Yeah, if you grab the microphone, you can.
Mark Arath, library trustee. Uh, I think that delta on the materials and install on the roofing slates or faux slate themselves was just about two-hundred thousand.
Right.
Difference across the whole roof.
Right.
And we broke that down between the nineteen-ninety-nine roof and the eighteen-ninety-three roof because the CPC is being, CPA is being asked for the funds on the older roof.
Right.
So we're keeping those separate. So that's just the two-hundred Ks in materials and install.
Right. But to me it was very important, you know, if, if the cost of the synthetic had been significantly less, it would have been a much harder decision, whereas it's minor in the overall scheme of things. I think it's that much easier to support the slate, which probably is the right solution in a longer-term line.
Well, it's a thirty-year roof versus a, a much greater year roof.
Right. Thank you.
So we'll have to figure out, Barry, you bring up a good point, do we move the CPA? We'll have to talk about that. Um, Article Nine is to increase the, uh, local room occupancy excise from three to six percent effective, uh, two thousand and twenty. As you know, uh, it goes into effect July first, two thousand and nineteen at three percent. We told the town meeting that we would do three percent the first year, six percent the second year to take effect. So we put this on the warrant just to be consistent with what we told the town meeting, uh, moving forward. Any questions on that, please?
Yes. I, I know I've asked this before and you've said that this only, that there's a four-room threshold. You have to be renting out more than four rooms to, to?
On a bed and breakfast.
Yes. But where does it say that?
It, the, the law. You want to have the law quoted in the, uh, we don't usually, and we, we presented this to the.
So it's mass general laws has the four-room?
Chapter sixty-four G, section three A.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Ms. Artini, can we get a microphone to Connie, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Connie Sartini from Groton Harold. I have two questions regarding this. Number one, what is the revenue that is anticipated as a result of this increase?
I'm carrying in my estimate, revenue estimates for fiscal year twenty, fifty thousand at three percent.
Fifty at three percent?
That's our estimate. And that's based on, I believe, forty percent occupancy year round? Forty percent occupancy year round at the, based on their room rates. Have no idea, Connie, until we get that first payment in September.
My second question then is, has that become part of the operating budget?
It's part of the down budget.
So, it could be earmarked for a particular?
It's part of the overall budget. It's a revenue source of the overall.
So, another fifty thousand. Have we included that in our considerations for the coming year?
Yes.
We have.
It is in the budget for FY twenty.
We've already considered using that as part?
Correct, the fifty thousand at three percent, yep.
What about FY, I think Connie's question, maybe if we're including three percent for FY twenty, are we including another three percent for FY twenty twenty one?
Not until that passes at town meeting.
This has to pass for?
That's why I didn't include it. It's a good question.
I understand that, but there's another one of these situations where suddenly, perhaps we just made a fifteen, fifty K of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you know, four hundred thousand. So, I'm just, there's all these things that keep happening that moves the angles year to year.
Okay, we can make up two hundred fifty, seven fifty?
Yeah, no, I'm just.
Article ten. I wish, Josh is here on the phone. Josh, are you there?
I'm here, I actually had a question relative to the previous article.
Go ahead, Josh.
So, what I thought I heard you say was you carried fifty thousand dollars in the FY twenty revenue projections for three percent. However, if town meeting approves the additional three percent, when does that go into effect?
Not until fiscal twenty one.
July first, two thousand twenty.
Okay, thanks, Josh.
The ticket tax article, this is put on that would charge a five percent tax on purchase of tickets for admission to live performances at venues in Groton. We've gone through different iterations of this, and we've changed some wording. I will tell you, I've told Josh this, and I want the rest of the board to hear the same thing. I did receive a phone call from Representative Harrington, who informed me that she had been talked to about this. And she discussed it with the chairman of the Ways and Means Committee at the legislature in the House. And what I was told was that, I don't know, for those of you who don't understand the way the legislature works, any bill that gets voted on has to go through Ways and Means. It has to be voted positively out of Ways and Means. Because this has far reaching ramifications statewide, not just to Groton, even though it's a Groton home rule petition, excuse me, it has far reaching ramifications statewide. And the likelihood of this passing as a home rule petition isn't great, but it's our home rule petition. So, I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that conversation that I had with Representative Harrington. Josh, I don't know if there's anything you wanted to add to that.
Yeah, I do want to add something. Currently, cities are allowed to recess a ticket tax. But the home rule petition that would be brought forward by us in terms of bringing this to town meeting, and if it's approved, would need, as you just said, to go to Ways and Means. And would it have far ranging implications statewide? Absolutely. But somebody has to go first. And just because it may be a challenge to get through Ways and Means, doesn't mean that we shouldn't move forward with this as town and in town meeting. So, that said, if it does pass town meeting, somebody's going to have to go to the state house and try and shepherd this through during the course of a hearing process when the bill is heard. I have no problem carrying the torch on that one. So, I certainly hope that we move forward with this and do not pull it.
So, are all cities, like all allowed to do this, or do they have to petition as well?
I think they have to petition as well. I'm not sure, but I know that this particular article is for town.
So, the notion is that some cities do this, no towns do this?
Correct.
Go, do a search on it on Google. I've done it. I've spent hours trying to find some town in this state that has a bylaw that talks about this. And I haven't, I've just not been able to?
We would be trendsetters.
But cities you can find.
That doesn't say we don't necessarily go off and try. I think what it is saying and what Mark's trying to communicate is, be real careful about what you think the revenue numbers are and when they're going to start showing up.
So, Connie, I'm not carrying anything in the budget for this. Allison, help us. Yep.
Yeah, go ahead, Josh.
We still have a number of years before the larger venue goes online. So, while something might fail in the upcoming session in front of Ways and Means, we still have a number of years in order to try and shepherd this through. And I think it's important, not just on our local level, but in diminishing state aid to all cities and towns, we have to look at ways of recapturing lost revenues in terms of municipal costs in order to service the needs of the venues. And this tax would apply not just to Indian Hill, but to any performance venue over, what is it, two hundred people with a paid performer? Is that correct, Mark?
Yes.
So, that said, we have a number of years to work on this. And I would strongly recommend, in deference to the opinion of State Representative Harrington, to move forward with this and then do the advocacy required on state level in order to try and get this first before the whole house.
All right, Carol?
A question on this as a member of a nonprofit. So, if a nonprofit holds an event which has paid performance, will that tax be taxed on a nonprofit? For instance, the History Center holds a venue where they, and recently we had a line here, we had a paid person who came in and did music. That wasn't the main part of the event, but it was part of the event. This article isn't clear whether that then would require us to have that five percent tax. Or if, I mean, in the past, the NRWA had a performance where musicians came in and played, and they raised money that way. So, what impact does this have on, and Indian Hills is a nonprofit. So, what impact does this have on nonprofits? Would we be required to do the paperwork for this when, you know, we have a board of seven people?
That was the concern, that was the concern from Ways and Means on the impact on nonprofits. So, that would raise a good point.
So, was your history commission two hundred people venue?
Well, it wasn't quite, but you know, we'd like it to be someday. So, you know, in the future, as this, sorry.
That's okay, okay, no, I?
As this event grows, there's a real possibility. I mean, we had a hundred and eighty-eight people. So, yes, there was a good possibility at the time that this passes, we could have a capacity of two hundred people.
If I recall, the intent was that the tickets were offered to watch a performance by a paid performer.
Correct.
That was the intent. If that has been stripped out of this, then that's a problem. Because the intent was that you're paying a comedian, the comedian's on stage, and people are going to buy tickets to see that comedian, regardless of the group. I recognize there's challenges which way or the other. That was the original intent of this. If that's been taken out of this, then we need to review it. So, yeah, John?
I'm reading the definition of venue from what's here in the draft warrant. Venue means any facility within the town of Groton which holds any live performance or event with a capacity of two hundred or more, which is not an athletic event, and are open to the public and is not offered or managed by the Groton Dunstable Regional School District. That's all the words I see in here relative to who this applies to.
Yeah, Allison.
I thought we had changed that.
I haven't received any feedback to amend this from anybody. I'm dying for feedback.
Mark, what's the process here? So, if we authorize and it goes and they pass it, is this the language? Or is there another step? Like, do they grant us the ability to do that? And then do we have to go to town meeting again to actually figure out what we want to do?
This is what, if this passes and the legislature makes no changes, this is what it is?
Well, no, if the legislature makes no changes. But note that when they reviewed the charter, they made changes. So, there is, this could come back with changes, absolutely.
Yes.
And if it does, I think the select board has to accept them. And in certain cases, depending on the volume, the town has to, there's some threshold.
Well, if you see, if you see the wording here, look at this, it says, "And to authorize the select board to approve amendments, which shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of the petition." So, if all of a sudden they come back and say, now it's going to be thirty percent, that's a major change, which would need to go back to town meeting. See what I'm saying?
Huh?
The blocky other schools.
The Shalba Tech?
No, Lawrence Academy, Groton School.
It does not.
They are, they are. But there's, yes. And there's challenges of trying to exclude or preclude, you know, you have to apply a law fairly, right? Yeah, so this has wide ranging implications, right?
But it's excluding one school and not excluding the other two schools.
Right, and that was where I thought in our conversations in our meeting that we had eliminated the school district and we had expressly talked about not removing athletic events.
I apologize, I don't recall having any amendments to this. So, please, we still have plenty of time. Please give me your changes, and I will make any changes you want me to make. I'm sorry if I did not get that.
I don't know that we specifically got to the point of saying, this is an amend this, amend that. We did have significant dialogue about the issues that are being discussed.
Yeah, this has not reappeared with amendments since that discussion. So, if the board has? If the board has challenges with the way it's written, let's get those in, and we'll discuss them next week or the week after. Yeah, Josh?
Yeah, I want to really emphasize, this is not meant in any way, shape, or fashion to impact nonprofit organizations in the town of Groton. The end user bears the burden of the tax should this be approved. So, the bottom line is, is just like when you call Ticketmaster, you call Live Nation, and you order a set of tickets, or whether it be a baseball, basketball, or concert, you pay service charge fees. And this is a fee borne on the end user that needs to be administered by whatever venue is within the town of Groton. I just want to point that out.
If I can contradict, there's always a cost for any time a tax is levied on an organization and administering that tax, not only to the people, but to pay the town or the municipality or whatever government is charging it. So, you're right, the intent is that the money comes from the patrons. However, there will always be an impact whenever you impose a legislative agenda upon any organization, period, in the story. Because they have to now maintain against that. I mean, that's a business challenge every day of the week that you have to suffer through because you don't have any choice but follow the law. And so, you have to maybe hire somebody to handle that. We've seen that many times in many situations. I think we move on.
Okay, I'm not going to cover articles eleven and twelve this evening because the Community Preservation Committee has not finished their work. And so, we will schedule them to come in on October, October, forgive me, April.
Yeah, we're going to table everything until October, everybody.
April first. Article thirteen is the Shalba Valley Technical Roof and Window Project Approval. The total project cost is three point seven million dollars. For the district, Groton's share of the debt service is anticipated in fiscal twenty to be thirty seven thousand dollars should that pass. And then we pay it back over ten or fifteen years on the project. So, that's that particular article.
Any questions on that? Everybody's got that? All right, thank you.
It's not an option.
It's not an option. Well, a majority of the communities within the district have to pass it in order for it to go to a right.
It is an option, but we might get swept in regardless.
If we vote no, we could still be?
Yes.
Okay.
Same thing if we vote yes, it could be defeated.
Yeah, if we vote yes, it could go no, right?
Yep. Article fourteen, I need the board to officially vote at the end of this discussion if you choose to add this to the warrant. I put it on for tonight's purposes because the board talked about it last week. But it would be after the fact that I need the board to open the warrant and vote to officially add this. But in order to review this, the board had asked me, and the finance committee had asked me on Friday, to get additional information. I had presented this to the board either last week or I sent out an email to the board alerting you to this particular situation. I believe we talked about this last week. And the anticipated cost for various repairs that the town is responsible for exceeds the sixty two thousand dollars that we originally appropriated. So, we had come up with a, the board had asked for me to put together a year one, year two, and year three budget on what we thought the anticipated costs were going to be moving forward, based on some of the information we discussed last week. I talked again to the finance committee on Friday, and they said, well, have Tom go through the building again and make sure he sees everything that he can anticipate. And he did that. And you can see from what I sent out to you last Thursday versus what I'm showing you today is in italics in this presentation. But it looks like we need an additional one hundred and four thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars over the next three years to fund the town's obligation. There's twenty one thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six left in the article, which means we would need a town meeting request of eighty-two, six, six, six. I rounded it up to eighty-six thousand for the building. And what I did, and Becky brought this up earlier, what is the impact of the free cash? I gave you this document that shows you that in two thousand nineteen fall, the fall fiscal two thousand nineteen, our free cash was certified at two point two million dollars. We spent one point five at the town meeting, fall town meeting, appropriating it for various needs. Our anticipated needs moving forward is OPEB at a hundred and sixty-nine, debt service at ninety-eight, and performance incentive leap year at thirty-three thousand. Those were items that I brought to the select board and the finance committee's part of the budget that we would use free cash to fund these one time costs. There are now three articles potentially on the warrant that would need free cash. Prescott at eighty-six, accessibility improvements, which we'll get to in a minute, of sixty thousand. And then the board had voted last, or two weeks ago, or three weeks ago, to move forward with the Broad Meadow drainage improvements, which would be fifty thousand. All of that into consideration, we would have a balance left of a hundred and eighty-four thousand, nine forty-eight free cash, which makes me a little nervous, but it's in the ball pocket of the two hundred thousand that we like to carry in that line item at the end of the year. So, I would be happy to answer any questions. I think Tommy D is here somewhere to answer questions too, so I'll turn it over to you.
John, that was a hesitant arm raise.
Well, I'm wondering, where do the funds come from that we put into the capital account for the school district?
The four hundred and twenty-nine, I mean, the six fifty?
What we put annually into that?
That came out of free cash.
Comes out of free cash?
That was part of the one point five. That's part of the one, I didn't give you all the appropriations from the fall town meeting, John?
Okay.
All those appropriations show the one point five. Should I have done that?
No, no, I mean?
I just wanted to make sure it hadn't disappeared.
No, 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 it's part of the one point five regarding spend.
What about not funding the whole? So, in my opinion, this Prescott thing is starting to become like a capital plan challenge. And it's capital. And if it's going to be funded over three years, but we don't need to spend the free cash this year, and we can put it as part of the capital plan moving forward, there's pros and cons about that, right? I like, I don't know.
Excellent question.
Just saying, because if we're going to keep funding this thing out of free cash and it's part of the capital plan, then it should operate like any other two thirds vote that comes out of the capital plan, out of the capital stabilization fund to fund it.
But correct me if I'm wrong, Allison, correct me if I'm wrong. When we did the lease negotiations with the friends and we saw what their budget was and we saw what the town's obligations were to be, we went to town meeting to say, hey, here's our three year obligation under the lease. Please fund it now so that we can guarantee the three years of the lease. And that's why we went with the sixty-two. Unfortunately, that sixty-two is now a hundred and forty.
If we do?
Do you want to express some fertilizer on that sixty-two?
Mark, do we need to, do we need to vote to add this or not tonight? Or can this wait one week? Since we have potentially a meeting with the Prescott, with the Friends of Prescott?
It's actually on the agenda for next week, yes.
So, can we just kind of table this until?
All right, so let's save this till next week. Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely, yes. So, just to reiterate what Allison was saying, the Friends of Prescott are coming in next Monday night, next Monday night to talk about the business plan. I think that's what Allison referred to.
Well, that, we're going to meet on Friday.
Correct.
And then they're coming in on Monday to talk about the business plan.
Before the full board. So, that's exactly correct.
I was just hoping, Tommy, if you could give us a quick loadout of what you learned this week since we met with you on Friday. So, I had my maintenance crew go through a heat burn that was the oldest group at the school market. They keep out, there's a bunch of toilets that kind of leak. Sometimes not just around the bases or inside, but around the edges, hot water heater. Some step repair that we kind of missed, burglar alarm repairs. Just a couple of small miscellaneous things that we have missed since last week. One, two, three, four, fifty-five, six thousand dollars worth. Not a lot of big ones. The biggest one is probably burglar alarm, gym light replacements. Those are, that's a big ticket, I remember that's twenty-six. Mostly because you get, probably get staging up on the inside there somehow to do the repairs. So, those were the big ones since, for Friday.
John?
What is the rationale for the gym light replacement? Are they all out over there?
They're antiquated and hard to change them. And the best way to do it was just to replace them and just change the bulb. Is that a want or necessity? It's, do they need to be done? Can they wait to some point? They probably can, but it's something that needs to be done at some point in time. And it's just a matter of drawing the line, which ones are ours and which ones are the renty.
We were asked to get everything we could possibly think of, and that's what Tom did.
Can you put the list back up there?
Oh, I'm sorry, keep? Oh, I'm sorry. Keep actually adding. I apologize.
So I think it would be helpful to understand, I agree with that question about the gym lights. To me, that's more of a want than a need. I think it would be helpful to know if there are other things on here that kind of could be...
The only thing that's not up there for wants, or between wants and needs, are probably a lot of the stuff which is in the ADA plan, which will total up another...
Probably three or 400,000, right?
No, not that much. Well, if you count the elevator...
That was when I counted the elevator, absolutely.
Yeah, so another three or 400,000 if you counted all the ADA requirements. This doesn't address any of those. These are operational necessities. There's really no wants in this.
Right. That's a great opinion to have. Thank you.
Okay. So I'll put this on the agenda. Yep?
Go ahead, Josh, please.
Sure. I couldn't hear everything that Tom said. I apologize. Speaker Tom doesn't pick up the problem very well. But that said, is there any money left in the balance of the allocation from the CPC grants previously that should be used or deferred to some of these unanticipated expenses that occurred?
That's a, that's a great question. Yes and no. Probably no more than yes. We did take some 30,000 or 40,000 out of the 280,000 that was appropriated for the sprinkler system with this board's permission and the CPC's permission to fund some accessibility issues, doors, and the like, so that the building can be occupied by the Friends to meet their capacity needs. So, we've already spent that down. We did that with the hope that we were going to receive a Mass Historical Commission grant to pay for half of the, to pay for half of the installation of the sprinkler system. Unfortunately, we found out a couple of weeks ago that the sprinkler system is not grant-eligible. So we will not be getting a 50% grant for the installation of the sprinkler system, and it's all borne on the town. So in anticipation of that, Bruce Seesum and I put out forbid the installation of the sprinkler system, and those bids are due on April 18th. Yep, so I will know the actual cost of the sprinkler system. So, when I say yes and no, the estimate was 280. We have 240. I don't know what the bid is going to be until I open the bids on April 18th for the full sprinkler system. Does that answer your question, Josh?
Well, I answered the question relative to the CPC, but I certainly remember going back a number of years when all of this Prescott discussion released relative to here and this to the Friends of Prescott was that we weren't going to be spending any more money than what we allocated. And then we stretched that out at the fall town meeting to meet the three-year need at 60,000. Now, as I just said earlier, it seems like some fertilizer was spread on that. And that's no fault of the Friends of Prescott in any way, shape, or fashion. However, this is just a continuing growing liability that the taxpayers have brought to continue to maintain this building. And obviously, the Friends are doing quite well with their programming and offering a valuable resource to the town. But it's becoming another country club in many ways that one thing after another keeps coming up, whether it be every six months or on an annual basis, that keeps growing this budget to the point where the sustainability versus the rent that's being generated, questions whether or not this building should maintain in town possession or should ultimately go back up to another RFP.
I guess we'll have that conversation next week when we look at the business plan?
Josh?
I don't need to complicate the issue, but I hope you guys are all conscious of the ongoing expenses that are incurred by taxpayers.
I don't think there's a member of this board that's not... Well, I won't speak for anybody else but me. I'm...
I think we're fully aware.
I'm really, really frustrated with more and more money, more and more money, more and more money for something that we hope will break even and, you know, and I just, I don't know. But as you say, let's table it till next week and let's review this, have some time to step away from this $86,000 bomb and get some rational thoughts around it next week.
Article 15, as long as you would add to the agenda, in addition to the case of the business plan from the Friends of Prescott, an additional discussion about this specific expenditure.
Yes, it will be on the agenda as civic line item. Thank you, Josh.
Article 15 is provide funding for accessibility improvements. As you know, we voted money in the Springtown meeting for the Commission on Accessibility to conduct an ADA self-evaluation and transition plan for town buildings. They did a great job and they brought forward a list of issues that needed to be done on the various town buildings. That list has been gone through with a fine-tooth comb by the Building Commissioner, Tom Delaney, and myself, along with Michelle Colette, our ADA Coordinator. And we looked at, to answer anticipation of Allison's question, the must-haves and the wants. We looked at what really needs to be done to bring the buildings up to handicap, to accessibility rules. And we're at about $60,000 for the Country Club Legion Hall, Lost Lake Fire Station, Police Station, Library, Town Hall, and the Transfer Station. We specifically excluded Prescott School from it because, like I said, that's in the $300,000 range for accessibility improvement, so we left that out. But this is a very important article, and I hope we can get the funding necessary to get this done.
Looks like you have a spreadsheet there of those items?
I do, and all of the self-evaluation transition plans and the cost estimates are available on the town's website. If you go to the Commission on Accessibility, it's a detailed list. The other commitment the Commission on Accessibility has made to work with the Friends of Prescott and with the town to apply for a grant. The Massachusetts Office on Disabilities has a grant round every September. Traditionally, they have been in the amount of $250,000 to do accessibility improvements for a certain project. So we have made a commitment to apply for grant monies in the fall to assist with Prescott. Prescott's the largest line item on this, the country club being the second. And the town departments and the town department heads have taken care of a lot of the issues that were identified just using their own staff, and the town has addressed several of the issues to date.
Can I clarify, or can I ask a clarifying question? You said that you planned to go to, to request a grant for $250,000 or so from the state, but you only want to apply that to Prescott?
Correct.
What about the $60,000 we're asking from the voters this year? Why can't we apply?
Because we wouldn't have enough money to do all of it, and we thought our chances to receive the grant would be better if we focused on one project rather than trying to bring the town into compliance across the board for all 10 buildings.
It is, as you can see, I put in this so the voters will know that the self-evaluation plan and cost estimates are on the town website for those to look at. But I don't know if we would get, we received, we received some help with the, with the, with the plan itself. I don't know if we would get more money for the...
I don't think we would for things that, you know, the town as owner of these buildings is obligated to address. I think our chances would be much better for one project for a significant change of use in that building. Yeah. Barry?
Okay. All right.
Barry, I have a question.
Yeah.
Or a comment?
Becky.
So, I just want to remind us and hope that we would include this in the discussion next week about Prescott. The original plan that the Municipal Building Committee...
I'm sorry, Becky.
That the Municipal Building Committee for Prescott School recommended was to use the building and do the minimal repairs necessary until such time as we had some years of experience under our belt and perhaps more CPA money would be available to embark upon a major renovation of the building. So I just want to get clear about timelines. I wouldn't support even applying for a grant for a year before we actually make as a town the decision about whether or not to rehab the entire building. So, timing, we just need to coordinate.
And that is certainly understandable, and we could apply for the grant in two phases because in our transition plan, the installation of the elevator would not be until 2020, where the other improvements really should be made no later than December 31st, 2019. So we would anticipate that we could break it into two phases, whatever the town would prefer to do.
And just in general, I think all of the comments that we've made, I certainly don't support spending any more than the minimum needed to keep that building operable. And then I think, you know, at some point, we need to, as a town, address the question of, do we want to actually have this building be usable and undertake the effort to rehab it all?
Okay, Article 16.
James Brook, we talked about this.
Only 50 more to go.
I think David has a standard.
Oh, I'm sorry, David, please.
Question on Article 15. If the ADA and AAB is a building code issue, I'm wondering why the Select Board chose to deal with it outside the budget as a separate article?
These are one-time costs. It's not operational. It won't continue once we make these improvements. So it was actually my recommendation that it be an article instead of in the operating budget.
Thank you.
Article 16, the maintenance of James Brook. I think the board voted to proceed based on the flooding of Broad Meadow Road. So we put this article on. There's a typo here. I fixed it. That should say 50,000, not 40,000. Any questions on that? Article 17 is the Stretch Code, the Stretch Energy Code, which we are moving forward to become a green community. I'd be happy to answer any questions there. Article 18, I will turn over to our Land Use Director. Articles 18 and 19 are two zoning articles in which the Planning Board has held public hearings. And I think Takashi can explain those.
Before we continue, do you have any more financial articles?
In the consent agenda, there are some. Would you like me to skip ahead to those? Sure.
Let's skip ahead to the consent agenda.
One second.
Sorry, I just want to release the finch off because I've got another two hours here to work. Sorry, I don't know if I covered my mic.
Jumping ahead, jumping ahead to the, to the consent agenda. You have current year line item transfers. We're putting together a list. We'll have a list for the Finance Committee in the next couple of weeks. I'm working with Patricia on that. Snow and ice deficit, this one here, we're going to ask for up to, right now, $14,000. It'll probably be closer to probably 40 or 50, and we'll try to figure out how to fund that to get the deficit at, down this year. Article 29, the water commission will be coming forward, and Patricia helped me. I think they're looking for 100 and...
130 for sewer. I haven't heard, I haven't emailed you about water.
Yeah, water and sewer. These are consent agenda items. It's transfers from the E&amp;D to help finalize their FY '19 budget. So you have one for the water, one for the sewer, and one for cable.
These are their...
Their E&amp;D, not ours. Correct. Out of the enterprise funds. And then prior year bills, right now, we don't have any, so this article will most likely be withdrawn. Debt service for surrendering farm for next year is $481,000. Seventy's going to be coming out of the Open Space Reserve, 411 under the unallocated. Article 34 is the various revolving funds at those limits. Article 35, I gave you a huge explanation on that the board had asked for. Those are the exemptions for 70-plus seniors.
Can I just say?
Yep.
I wasn't here for the original discussion. I still found, I can't make any sense of that explanation.
And that's much better, Becky. I'd be happy to sit down with you and Jonathan and answer your questions on that.
Okay.
And then Article 36 is the Veterans, for six consecutive months, it allows for veteran exemptions. So those are the money articles, Gary. Are there any questions on any of those? That's it.
All right. Thanks, Gary. Appreciate you guys' time. We're going to do that after we close, after we suspend the hearing of the warrant.
Takashi. There are two zoning articles, Article 18 and Article 19.
Go ahead. Thanks. Hold on, let's give some time for people to clear up.
Would you like to know?
Say if you have any questions on Article 18 or 19 on the board. Gosh, Takashi's here to help us out.
Why are you thinking about that? I would just mention that for Article 18, the off-site, off-street parking, the Planning Board held a public hearing on January 24th and closed the public hearing on that date. This is something that...
Hold on, sorry. Can we, trying to, trying to hear here.
Yeah, this is something that stemmed from what was a citizen's petition back at the fall town meeting. The Planning Board made a commitment to the petitioners to have, to take a serious look at the issue and come forward with something for the Springtown meeting that would hopefully address the parking issues that these residents brought up. And so this is the Planning Board's, the result of the Planning Board's effort to do that.
Did the individuals involved in the situation all attend that hearing?
I don't know if they attended that particular public hearing, but there was attendance. The Plan Board held a number of discussions to the public hearing. So, the interested parties were in attendance at one or more of those meetings and or the public hearing.
All right. Thank you. Article number, any questions on Article number 18? Article number 19 is some housekeeping changes for the zoning bylaw.
That's correct. So...
So I appreciate that we are changing the word massive to the word massing. Some funny stuff in there.
It makes a difference.
Yes, it does. So I think these are, that's pretty self-explanatory. Is Article 20 also under, is that under Nick or is that under...
Article 20 is for forestry activities. It's to enter into a 10-year lease instead of a three-year lease. We did this last year with the, with the surrendering farm activities to manage those particular fields. We want to do the same thing here, so we don't have to keep coming back to town meeting and to go out to bid, get into a 10-year situation, and they'll all be working out exactly what they, what they need to do. Any questions on that? Article 21.
Could I just say something to Takashi?
Yeah.
I saw in the paper, the public noticed that you were going to have a public hearing about a zoning proposal that we had actually put together.
I told him last week.
And we canceled it. And I just wondered, does that... Do people tend to show up for these things? I mean, having had it advertised, are you obligated to be there and explain to people that we pulled the article?
So, we will have a public meeting, a regularly scheduled public meeting on the date that was advertised. The public hearing for the Select Board's proposal for zoning for short rentals was going to be the first item on that agenda. If people are there for that at 7:00 PM, I'm sure George, Ben, or whoever is chairing the meeting will make it clear that we are not having a public hearing on that topic because it has been withdrawn from the district.
All right. As long as you don't have to come out just for that.
No, we'll have a meeting regardless.
Article 21 is to pass a bylaw. They would prohibit the discharge of water onto a public way. And if they do, there would be fines involved. I think we talked about this with Tom Delaney previously. Is there any questions on that? And then...
I do have a question. Sorry. Has this been a big problem?
It is, yes. It happens a couple different ways. It happens with sub pumps, people will pump the sub pumps. And if you, when you really get onto it, also man-made diversions. If people build bit burns on the side of the road, create public, it's not just the installing reasons because the public will know.
Okay.
It's possible diversion, installing stuff on the right way. So it is.
Thank you.
So where this references onto a public way, I assume that's like a street?
Yes.
That's not... Just want to make sure it's not going to impact Olivia.
It's a street or a road or whatever that's maintained by the town.
A lot of stuff is man-made, but it...
That's been adopted. I think, I think Al's question's been adopted by the town.
I just wanted to make sure that we weren't going to adopt this and create an additional barrier to that group of citizens then potentially discharging, not into the public way, the street, but into the conservation.
Oh, I see.
Making sure that...
By the way, we're going to let you do it, but then we're going to find you.
Making sure the public way is really just a street, not as...
The public right of way. And actually, the street, this is always going to be a condo build. It'll never be a public way where they are. So this is just for a public way, our, except for town.
Okay.
Thank you.
Article 22 is an article that I proposed to get additional liquor licenses for the town because we're at our maximum allowed by state law based on our population. We get a lot of phone calls from people... We get a lot of phone calls from people asking if we have any liquor license available, so I figured, hey, let's petition the legislature to see if we can get some more and maybe get some business here in town. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions on that.
Any questions from the board on this? No?
Does that just require a majority vote?
At town meeting, yes.
But then, it's up to the legislature to decide?
Correct, yes.
Does legislature have a history of authorizing these things?
They gave the town a Tingsborough two or three years ago, like 14 licenses.
Apparently, they have a history of giving them out.
Well, they give 14, not package store, but restaurant licenses and things like that. Stormwater management, Michelle still here? Basically, what this particular article, what this particular article does is, right now, laws, when you grant a permit, you have to do the work within two years of the work. The state law changed, and this will allow them to go to three years before the permit has to be renewed or it goes away. So, that's what this particular article does. And then, Article 24, I'm hoping to pull this article, but if we need to revoke the charter to get the legislature to act, we have it, although I've been assured from our state senator and state representative that it's well on its way to final approval, but it's here just in case we need it. I'm hoping to pull it. And then, last but not least, citizens petition for adding a parcel to the town center overlay district. Mr. Emeral, who's been so patient tonight, is here. John, if you want to come up to the table and explain the article. And thank you for your patience tonight.
My pleasure. John Emeral and one of the owners of Levin Lowell Road in Groton, which is at the corner of Route 40 and Main Street. And we are petitioning to have this parcel included in the town center overlay district. And I, I'm going to just read one quick sentence because it says it better than I can. This is from our zoning bylaws. "The purpose of the town center overlay district is to promote a socially and economically vibrant town center by enabling civic, commercial, and residential development that is consistent with the design guidelines for the district and with the town's comprehensive master plan." It goes on to say, "In providing landowners with the opportunity to elect an alternative form of development which provides greater flexibility and density in exchange for advancing the TCOD design and land use goals contained in those documents and as well as the master plan." This simply is asking the voters of the town to, if they vote to approve this, our zoning doesn't change. We remain RA, but it gives us the ability to go before all of the boards that would have to grant approval for any development, and with the planning board, it would be considered a special permit. So, they would be the ones that would determine, would approve or not any application that we would make. We would have to go before the historic, the HTC, Historic District Commission. We are in the district. Our goal here, what we'd like to do is to create a mixed-use development that would include some residential, some retail, small retail, more boutique type, and potentially build on to, in some form, the hospitality that we offer next door at the Groton Inn. Anything that we would do, there's some very strict guidelines that reference green space, maintaining of green spaces within the property, keeping parking as much as possible out to the rear. We have submitted a package, both to the planning board and HTC today, that outlines how we accomplish that. But I think, again, the key point here is that this is simply to ask the voters if they would be willing to include this parcel in the town center overlay district, which then enables us to come forth to the appropriate boards to approve any project or not that we would submit.
Is this parcel, it's within the Historic District Commission purview? Okay, and is there any intent to dramatically alter that building at this point, or has that not been determined?
To improve it, to, that would be a part of our plan to Waters House, yes.
Thank you.
Barry?
Yeah.
So, I'll ask a question, which I assume you might get asked at town meeting. What does the town center overlay district allow that you could not do under RA?
So, our, my understanding is that the RA currently allows us to do, we could do a two-family and rent out Waters House as a two-family. We could do a three-family so long as one of the principals, the owners of the property, lived in the house, and that would be, and a single family, and that would be the extent of that. One of the things that, by going through this process, and we talk about the language right from the bylaw, the economically and socially vibrant, the economic part of it ties right into what's been discussed at length tonight, is that is the generation of additional tax revenue for the town. The retail, any residential that we would contemplate bringing forward would most likely be one and two-bedroom, and it would be in the form of condominiums or apartments. So, it's not, there's nothing wrong, I have my kids, and my youngest one is at the school now. It's just that we, there's people that, you know, look at the larger homes and say they're a drain on the town's tax revenue, not a net positive generator. This, I think, by the nature of the development on the residential portion of it, and we're still having developed that plan fully, but it would, in our estimation, it would result in a net positive effect for the town in terms of the tax revenue generation.
Okay, thank you. I'm in favor of this.
Okay, we're officially not taking positions, though.
Sorry, I support this idea.
I would just add that, as John mentioned, he did submit his materials to the planning board. The planning board will hold a public hearing on the concept plan and rezoning and town center overlay district petition on April 11th at 7:00 PM most likely, sometime on April 11th, 7:00 or after. And I don't want to get too far ahead because this is just to get potentially, you know, the approval to expand the overlay district, but if that were to happen, one thing that John didn't mention, in addition to the Historic District Commission review and Planning Board review, the town center overlay district has a design review committee that would be convened for any project, any special permit application within the town center overlay district, and that would help provide guidance to the planning board specifically on some of the, kind of the architectural and landscape aesthetics of the projects.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask the board to continue the public hearing on the warrant to next week.
She'll move.
Thank you.
Second.
She's been moved to second to continue the public hearing until next week. All those in favor?
Aye.
Actually, because we could potentially have a, we had a real participant, let's do that roll call, please, even though Ramesh is not here, just for...
Right. Pine, aye.
Minogue, aye.
Geiger, aye.
Peace, aye. All right, we are now continued. We have a question from the gallery, Ms. Sartini.
Yes.
It's both.
Connie Sartini from the Groton Herald. I'm thinking about what I'm going to report on your budget discussion, and I must admit it was a little bit challenging. But what I would like to ask is, is it your expectation that at next Monday's meeting, there will be a final position on whether or not we're moving forward with the addition of two firefighters as part of an override?
Actually, well, let's separate those two questions, Connie.
Okay.
I plan to take a vote, a request of motion tonight, on whether or not we're going to support two firefighters.
Okay.
The question of whether or not we're going to override is a separate discussion, and that would be next week.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Because the FinCom has asked us so they can do their work and tell us if we need an override or not.
Okay.
If we could vote that tonight.
Just one other comment. Is there consideration, should someone make a motion from the floor to amend the line item budget for persons, protection of persons and property? Are you considering that as a possibility as well?
So, I consider everything. Citizens can, at any time, can make any motion they want from the floor to amend any line item. I've never seen it done, let me rephrase, I've never seen it done successfully at a town meeting, but it is always out there. Unfortunately, you know, we can't caveat things by that happening, but certainly, it can happen, and town meeting and the town will have to deal with the consequences, as always, yes.
In the event that should occur, does someone need to identify also where the offset would be from the remainder of the budget?
Can I answer that?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we can till afterwards.
Well, in this particular instance, if you go back to the sheets that I showed you before, if the Select Board, say, tonight, votes not to do it, which you could, you could vote to do it, and then you decide not to go for an override or whatever you decide to do, if you vote the budget that's before the Finance Committee right now with the school using the E and D account, the increase in the Shova Tech, two firefighters, and the increase in anticipated revenue from the governor's budget, we would be $30,000 under the levy limit. So, if somebody made that motion, you wouldn't need to find a corresponding cut because the use of E and D, which the Finance Committee is opposed to based on their vote tonight, still, we would be under the levy limit. Does that, is that understandable to everybody? Okay.
Thank you.
You got that, Connie?
Thank you.
Yeah, all right. It being 9:40, and I do not anticipate the next item that we're going to discuss, which will be under item number six, FY 2020 budget discussion specifically around the firefighters or not. It was going to be a quick item. I'd like to take a three-minute recess and let us, because we also have an executive session after this, so let's give us a break, take a three-minute recess, and we'll be back here at 9:45. So, that's four minutes. All right. I'm waiting on a response from Mr. Deegan, whether or not he wants to be part of the discussion. In the meantime, let's begin this. Up for discussion under agenda item number six is the, of the FY 2020 budget discussion, we've been requested by our peer board, the FinCom, to make a policy designation on whether or not the Select Board wishes to request the hiring of two more firefighters for fiscal year 2020. Who'd like to take us forward?
I will jump in.
Thank you.
So, I think that there's a lot to consider. This is a very emotional decision, as well as hopefully for some, there's a, kind of a spreadsheet component of it, I guess. You know, to me, this is a request that we've heard in some flavor several times in recent years. Unfortunately, when it came forward last year, the Select Board kind of kicked it out of the way and didn't really look into it. You know, at this point, there's a lot of information and interpreted data out there. I had worked a little bit with the fire chief the end of last week, and to me, he's kind of the main person that we really haven't heard from. He's been very helpful in supporting the task force and things like that, but we haven't heard directly from him. So, I was, you know, kind of as we went through things and talked about things, to me, you know, I was struck by, by two things. I think that the, you know, the focus on response time, you know, response time is important, it's not the whole picture. Realistically, I think the only way we can reduce the response times is to add more staff. And I think the other piece that, to me, is so incredibly important that I think it's really easy to kind of overlook in this whole discussion is the existing team, you know, that we have for our public safety and the stress and strain that they're under, you know, day-to-day by virtue of their, the jobs and volunteer positions that they fulfill for us. You know, there's not much that we can do to make a fire or a life emergency less stressful. But I think in providing them with, you know, appropriate staff levels, that we can help them. And I'm concerned that, you know, folks are spread so thin right now that, you know, it just takes one or two little changes in the overall structure, and the whole thing is going to kind of collapse around us. I went back and reviewed the report that was done, kind of the audit, I don't know if we formally called it that, you know, and they recommended having 50 on-call firefighters. We currently have 35. You know, I know that the task force encouraged everyone to kind of step up recruitment and retention, which is certainly important. I think that the, you know, the efforts that they've made in recent years are bordering on superhuman, and that, you know, the idea that we're going to somehow find more call firefighters is unrealistic. If you look at what it takes to be a call firefighter in terms of training and in terms of time availability, it just isn't realistic to me. You know, so through kind of looking at all of these pieces and crunching numbers and trying to be really analytical, I've come to the conclusion, as an individual, that we do need to move in this direction. And I apologize to everyone involved that it... in this direction. And, and I apologize to everyone involved that it kind of took me and others potentially so long to get here. I have tremendous respect for, you know, the whole team, in particular, the chief, and I appreciate everyone's patience. But I've, I've, I've gotten there, so I'm supporting adding additional firefighters at this point.
John Geiger.
Um, I, I support completely the addition of the two firefighters. I don't see any significant value for the town to postpone it further. Waiting another year, I don't think it's going to change anything. It's just going to cause us to be more stressed out in terms of how we cover everything. I believe an awful lot of study's been done. It's gone in different directions. We've probably put more time into the statistics than we have into the realities of the job and the realities of the tasks that the Fire Department's responsible for. And so I think the time has come to listen to the chief, to listen to the firefighters themselves, to look at the data in all the different angles that we can see it from. To me, it says, get it done and get it done now.
Josh, while you were, while I was dialing you up, Allison indicated her support as well. So you now have heard from John, as well as, I told you what Allison had said. Becky?
Yeah, so I'm going to be in a different position here. I, first of all, Bud's comments about the fact that eighty percent of our budget is salaries, and that is where we have to find a solution. Otherwise, we're going to need overrides every year. That's one factor that's influenced me. As I've talked to people about this, I, and I think was mentioned in the MRI report, I've not heard any complaints about the Fire Department. Actually, heard a very, very high level of satisfaction. I reviewed the, the Municipal Resources Report. They did say, and I think it's important to emphasize, that their, their recommendation about hiring started with the word "if" and said, "If the town thinks that they are ready to move to a full-time department," something to that effect, "then they should hire two people now and two people in another year or so." They then went on and listed six or eight different recommendations about how to increase the call fire department, consider paying health insurance, some of the incentives, get together how important it was to do that. I've also heard from people in town who've said, "We have, the police are working twenty-four hours. Police are already up and awake at night and out there and responding to calls. And couldn't we look at some ways of doing some mixing so that we wouldn't have to pay more people to be in the fire station at night?" I also went back and looked at the data that we did receive. I, I, I'm setting, I'm trying to make this decision based on data rather than on the emotional reaction that I think we all have, that of course, it would be better to have more people, and that would bring down response time. And if I'm the person having the emergency, of course, I want that response time down. But like I said, I, I want to focus on the data. We have one chart that shows us that we have less than twenty calls per year between midnight and six AM. That's, that's like less than two a month. And for that number of calls, we're going to be paying people, two people to be asleep in the fire station every night. That just seems like maybe it's not as needed as it is, as we think it is. I also looked at the response times and, and the, I think the incidents when people really need help, the critical ones where time is of the essence, are the ones that are handled by the ALS ambulance. We don't have the ALS ambulance. And so what, by us adding people to our staff, we are not going to bring the response time for the ALS ambulance down. And as it is, the chart show, the data shows that we, our ambulance generally gets there before the ALS ambulance. So I, we're not, it seems to me, we're not going to be improving response time for the kinds of situations where it really is crucially important. I also thought we need to think about what potential...
No questions until the board members just finish speaking, please. Thank you.
I, I think that, to move to a twenty-four-hour department involves some questions that we haven't even thought about. I've wondered if there would be extra costs. If we're going to have people sleeping at the station, are we going to be needing to pay for bedding? Are we going to need to pay for laundry? Are we going to be needing to pay for food? And are we also going to be facing a need for, if someone is called out in the middle of the night for four hours of work, are, are they going to be able, are we going to, are they going to be expected to have four hours of more time to sleep? And, and then I looked at the fact that if we're adding two people at forty hours a week, that's eighty hours of coverage that we're adding, then we're reshuffling everyone to have twenty-four hour coverage, which means two people in the station presumably sleeping eight hours a night. That adds up to a hundred and twelve hours of sleep. So we've added eighty hours of work, of coverage, but we've lost thirty-two hours of productivity of whatever it is that, that is being done during the daytime now by people who are working when they're not out on the call, obviously. So those are some of my reasons that I think we could hold off on this for another year. And because of a lot of uncertainty about our budget, I think that that would be a better decision.
Mr. Deegan, would you like to give your thoughts?
My thoughts are, I support completely now. I think John did a very good job of summarizing my thoughts as well, and it came very much along the same lines as he does. I think that, you know, we can look at statistics and feel a blue in the face. And not that they're not valid, but statistics, statistics are a point of reference of, of the past and what's occurred. And we live in a growing community that's got eleven-plus, thousand-plus residents, thirty-eight-hundred-plus structures. We have a new rotten inn. We have new restaurants. We have a new performance center coming online. We have private schools with students. That's mine. Sorry, I apologize.
No, don't worry about it.
It's yours.
It's okay, Josh. We, we, we understand.
Needless to say, I completely support. I think the time to do it is now. I do understand that it's burned, but I also understand the way we are formulating this should we move forward with an override gives the voters a chance to weigh in on us and tell us how they feel. And if we have the money to put eighty thousand dollars more per year to start school, we certainly have enough money in order to fund two additional firefighters to provide protection.
Okay. So I'm glad we've gotten to this point, finally. I was more than miffed last year when, while I was not present, having been a remote participation, a rogue motion got made before any discussion could happen to table this all from last year's discussions. But as a result of that, we've done even more work to prove that, to, excuse me, to hear from a committee that was established to say that indeed, the town should move forward and hire more firefighters, which I could have told you by listening to the chief for the past five years. So I'm very, very, very happy and finally able to say I, I support this, and I'd love to hear a motion and affirmative. Please.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Under discussion, anything further from the board?
What is the motion?
The motion is that we add two additional firefighters to the seven that we already have. These are career firefighters.
For the FY twenty budget.
Second amendment?
All right. If it has to do with how we, go ahead. I'll, I'll listen. I prefer to keep this straight and succinct, but go ahead.
Stop here to an affirmative vote of Proposition Two and a Half, over.
I do not consider that a friendly amendment. That's, that's up to Finance Committee to decide how they're, if they want to fund this. And if they come back and say that it's not balanced, or we can't balance it, then we can then make a decision on a, on a, on a override. We do not want them coupled together.
It'll be on the agenda for next week.
The override question will be on the agenda for next week regardless. Thank you, Josh. I appreciate that idea, but I prefer to keep this vote straight up, that either we are deciding as a town we need them or not. All right. Anything from the public at this point? Yes. Please grab a microphone if you don't mind. Thank you.
I want to thank you for finally, finally making this, making it happen.
Okay. Is there anything further? Yes, sir.
I would like to have those statistics checked on that. I think the call department deserves a little more credit than saying they go out twenty times a year. That's a ridiculous number to be thrown out. Sixty percent of the calls get handled by the day. We're running them up. We'll call for easy math, twelve hundred calls a year. Sixty percent get handled by the day. As of eight o'clock, we increased that number by two hundred calls, right? So we're talking roughly, you know, they're going out three hundred times a year?
Yeah.
At the unstaffed hours, they're going out about three hundred? Not twenty. That's a ridiculous number to throw on the table and say they're only going out twice a year. These people are going out a lot more than that. That number shouldn't be thrown around like that. They deserve a lot more credit than that.
Can I, I just respond that this...
Order, please. Thank you.
I don't think that this is talking at all about the credit that is due, as I, I agree, to the call firefighters. This was one of the charts that was distributed, and I said...
The chart must be pretty, the numbers are way wrong.
Between midnight and six AM.
On-mand hours start at eight o'clock at night.
I know, but this shows between midnight and six AM, under twenty calls a year.
We're going to move on with the vote at this point. Thank you very much. Appreciate that there might be some disagreements between numbers, as there always will be. And I hope that people are prepared to bring up those numbers and defend those numbers should this come up at town meeting. All right. All those in favor signify by saying, roll call votes. Signify by saying aye. Roll call, starting with the phone.
Aye.
Piece aye.
Geiger aye.
Minugian aye.
Heine nay.
So the vote pass is on roll call, four to one. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, under the business, I know, we already talked about the ballot and the override. I know John has an update on the reusable bag initiative. There's a bunch of information in the packet.
There's only one item that I don't wish to table to next week with the, with the board's permission. It's not actually on our agenda. It's something I have to mention, though, tonight for legal reasons. So if the board's willing to consent to your, your item to table to next week, given that late hour and the work we have to go on, is that okay? All right. So under, under, other business, it came to my attention that a member of the Fire Department Task Force Committee was not sworn in by the clerk. So Town Council was asked about implications of this, and I'm going to read the implication, I'm going to read Town Council's... Response. I am, I am making it a public record, even though he said it's a client, privileged client, because I think it needs to be discussed on public. And I have a, I have an idea. I'd like to move, have it move forward, but I'd like to make sure the whole board, since this was a board's committee, I want to make sure the whole board is, is behind the steps forward, okay? So the...
Wait, are we behind releasing privileged information?
No, no. This is, this is a Town Council opinion that I'm choosing to read in public so the board can have awareness of that opinion as, as we move forward in this item. And I believe this item is good enough for public disclosure and my discretion. And you can chastise me for my lack of discretion later if you, if you don't agree with me. So Mass General Law Section, or Mass General Law Forty-One, Section One Oh Seven, requires that every other elected member and every appointed member of every board or commission of a town, and every other elected officer and every appointed officer of a town shall also, before entering his official duties, be sworn in to the faithful performance thereof. However, this is Town Council's statement, "There are no pertinent cases interpreting the statute. The town should assume that any votes by the committee member who is not sworn in are invalid. If the votes remaining quorum of the members at a meeting would have carried the motion, the town has an argument that the vote was still valid. In December twenty eighteen, the Attorney General considered a complaint under the opening law that alleged that Orange Library Building Committee, Committee members were not sworn. The AG refused to find a violation of the opening law on that basis because the opening law does not require that public body members be sworn in office. However, the AG did find violation of the opening law because members had not certified that they had received a copy of the opening law and the AG's regulations and education materials within two weeks of qualification for office. The Attorney General in that case ordered immediate and future compliance with the law's requirements and cautioned that similar violations could consider evidence of intent to violate the law. The Town Council's recommendation is that the committee member be immediately sworn in and sign the official certification required by the opening law. The committee, at its next meeting, should reaffirm or ratify all votes taken during the term and, and attendance of the member who was not sworn." So that's Town Council's opinion that we asked the individual to get sworn in and that we asked the, the, the committee chair to form a meeting to re-vote all their votes. However, I will say that none of the votes would change without that member's vote. So the, the quorum still would, would pass and, and there wouldn't be an issue. But I think for intensive purposes, that that's the pathway I'd like to go. I'd like to hear from the board, whether they'd like me to reach out to the chair of the committee and the individual to, to make these requests or not.
So to me, at this point, I think if, if we're confident, and I certainly believe you, that none of the votes would change, I think that the committee is done with their work, and it's, it's not worth going there. It's probably something we need to, you know, add something to minutes or a memo or something to the file so that, you know, when someone digs this out in ten years, they recognize what the situation was. But I don't think it's worth reconvening, reappointing, revoting, that just...
Right. So we never disbanded that, that committee.
Understood.
And the challenge I have in response to that, that I thought similarly, was that if they choose to give a report at town meeting, that would, the member who did not this morning could not participate in that report giving or make a response as a result.
Correct.
So that's, that's the challenge, right? Go ahead, Becky. Yes.
If that member gets sworn in now, why would that person not be allowed to participate in a report at town meeting?
I didn't say that. I said if they...
Oh, I thought that's what...
If they, if they don't get sworn in, they won't be allowed to participate, right?
Right. So the person should get sworn in, but the need...
I think we should contact the person, get them sworn in. I think Allison, maybe rephrase that. I, maybe I misheard both. And you're like, not no one or the other. You just don't form the committee back again. Don't, don't make...
Right. Yeah, I have no problem with the person getting sworn in at this point.
The person should get sworn in. And...
But the idea of going back and effectively trying to redo all the votes is, to me, just kind of absurd.
I, I would agree that that, it seems unnecessary to ask the, the votes to be retaken. Obviously, the person should get sworn in.
All right. So I will reach out to the individual and, and let them know that they need to get sworn in.
Or they won't be able to...
Or they won't be able to participate any further in the committee.
Right.
And, and...
Which they might not wish to do.
I don't even, yeah. So because that individual's involved in the formation of the report that came before the Select Board, I don't think there's a choice of them getting sworn in or not.
And I would ask that, when the file gets put together, that there's a memo of record that's going to be put in there that explains and specifically points out that it was the case that even if they got re, got sworn in and we rewent through all the votes, it wouldn't have changed the, the total outcome.
The quorum would still be the quorum of each vote.
So that it's documented.
All right. I'll have to look through those minutes. I'll look through those minutes and double verify that case.
I think what you said is accurate.
I think so too, but I should, I should, since I made the statement, the onus is on me to double verify that. Yes. Yes?
It also, oh, I'm sorry.
No, you go ahead.
It's okay.
Without knowing exactly who the individual is, but I think sometimes people may be confused if they've already been sworn in for another role, that they, they actually do need to get sworn in for another, a second one, a second time, right?
Yeah, anytime, anybody's pointed, I mean, how many times have you been sworn in, Allison?
406.
Right.
Been sworn at quite a few.
Right, right, right. So, yeah, we won't go there. All right. Go ahead, John.
I just want to say, Mark, can you kind of circle around and figure out whether we need to change something or what needs to be changed so that in the future, we catch these kinds of things?
Yeah, you know, that's, that's a good point. We do say to all the committee members when we appoint them, please make sure you get sworn in by the town clerk. We send them an email telling them to please make sure you get sworn in by the town clerk. Where we drop the ball is we don't do additional follow-up to make sure that they get sworn in, so maybe we can add that step.
Yeah, I mean, just a checklist or something. I mean, it's...
I think we can do that.
And we have verification that our side has done, the request to get sworn in was sent.
Yes.
And the...
They were emailed, absolutely.
Great.
And were told that night at the meeting, please make sure you get sworn in.
That's right. Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you for, yes?
I think we also need committee chairs to get, and chairman and chairwomen and all to pay attention to this, because it's not a new problem. As I listen to our town clerk, it's not a new problem. And if there are people out there who just don't feel that they want to get sworn in, then they can't be working on a committee.
And related to this, remembering that I saw an email, my memory was refreshed about an email that I think we probably all got soon after the first of the year, that we have to retake conflict of interest training?
Conflict of interest is every two years.
Yeah. Becky, maybe when you got on the board, had you already taken conflict of interest training?
No, I think I did it right then.
You did. So you might be up and other, some of us are on a different cycle, because I know I did it last summer.
I see.
And I know I was certified for two more years.
Okay.
So we could, we could figure that out.
All right, thanks.
I have no other updates, Mr. Chairman, under ongoing issues, other to say that the senior center project is back on track and I'm very excited.
When you say back on track, it means we're building again.
That is exactly what I'm saying.
That would mean we're back on schedule.
We're, we're, we're still behind schedule, but we're back working again, and that's very exciting news.
Can I ask a question about that? I don't know if I ever asked this before, but it seems to me we have owners, project manager, and a clerk of the works, and neither of them noticed or had the power to say, "Don't work on the inside till you get the outside sealed up."
That's an excellent question, and I will tell you that it doesn't matter because means and methods is with the contractor. We can't tell them how to construct the building. So the answer to your question is, we did tell them not to do certain things, but means and methods is...
And enforce it.
Correct. It's a great question. But just remember, means and methods is with the contractor, not the town.
Are we able to dispose of the minutes quickly?
A move that we approved the minutes of March 11th, 2019, is presented.
So, second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Mr. Deegan, are you still there?
No, no, I'm sorry. He just texted me, he wants you to call him back for the executive session.
Okay, I'll do that. All right. So we're still in roll call, just because we've had a participation, but let's do this. All those in favor, roll call vote, please.
Heine aye.
Minugian aye.
Geiger aye.
Piece aye. Okay. That is, now I would like a...
I make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Clause 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. The purpose specifically to discuss the town manager's contract, and we do not intend to return to open session.
I'll second the executive session, the chair does so declare. Any, under discussion, anything? All right. Roll call vote, please.
Heine aye.
Minugian aye.
Geiger aye.
Piece aye. All right. We're now in executive session. Thank you.